All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our Tuesday, October 15 meeting. Yes, it is 6:30. That is the heads up. I will have our city clerk start with our roll call.
Mayor Kaylee Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Rosina Farrell.
Here.
Great, thank you so much. Councilmember Farrell, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Great, thank you so much. Deputy Mayor Howe, can you do the land acknowledgement, please?
Apparently only I have been acknowledging. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Kosaleish peoples, who have reserved the treaty rights to this land, specifically this Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of the land, who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you so much. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we will start with public comment in the room. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jan Byrd, and I live in Samamish. And I'm one of the Samamish stewards. It helps maintain the Lower Commons Native Plant Garden, along with four other volunteer stewards. And we've worked there weekly for probably about, oh, eight months of the year, since about 2019. And we're kind of proud of the way the garden looks. We think it looks better now than it ever has. And the reason why we got started and continue to work is we've always had the support of our volunteer coordinators. And then when we switch to having a restoration specialist, we actually have two people that kind of have our backs. And the Parks Department has always helped fund doing plants, doing training. They've made copies of education materials for Earth Day. They've done a little... The Parks Department has done a lot for us. So we weren't disappointed to hear in the proposed city budget, having the restoration interns, that position being removed. And they've helped us in a lot of ways. They do some weed whacking around our stormwater ponds in the summer. They've helped with watering of our newly planted native plants. It's really challenging, like Evans Creek Preserve has no running water. So it's a water tower with a motor on it, then dragging lots of hose. So we appreciate that they help out, you know, doing the watering there. I think they've already also helped at Ebright, because the area over the bridge is another hard-to-get-to area. They assist with a lot of recreation and volunteer events throughout the summer. They run an average of 200 restoration events throughout the summer, which is really, you know, a big thing. They monitor and identify emerging species of interest. They get rid of noxious weeds. They assist in planting sites, collect soil samples, track tree growth. They just do a lot of things to help us and to help the city. And the city and volunteers have worked hard to make gains in habitat restoration. And we need help to maintain what's been done. If we can't keep up and maintain the sites, then invasive species come in, and then a lot of the work has just been lost. I think you're getting a big bang for your buck with the summer interns. It helps Sebastian, a restoration specialist. He can expand his reach. And their worth is multiplied exponentially by all the volunteers that they're supporting and are able to help us. So in the long term, I think this saves money. The efforts of the stewards and other community volunteers between 2022 and 2024, apparently, we've kind of, we've worked on improving habitat in 10 acres of city parks. So community stewardship is helping also with the Urban Forestry Management Plan. And all the various divisions of us stewards are mentioned on page 45 of the adopted Urban Forestry Management Plan. So we see, at least I personally see it, the plan seems to be moving slowly.
Thank you.
The least we can do is keep the stewards.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, um, thank for... Oh, sorry, Jason Ritchie, Samamish. Hi. Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'd like to bring your attention to an important issue that I think is deserving of a look during budget season. If addressed, it would improve public safety around our schools and would have a positive impact potentially on our budget, or the city budget. Around our schools, every morning during drop-off and late in the afternoon during pickup, we see traffic, but we also see speeders and those that do not abide by crosswalk signals. I do this every day. I see it twice a day. It's a serious problem at several of our schools, first person. We've seen countless near misses and recent accidents that nearly became deadly. We need to increase our safety investments around our schools to prevent unrecoverable injury and create accountability for drivers. Our city has a contract with King County Sheriff's that provides for the Samamish Police Department. These police officers are stretched thin due to staffing issues and confronting malfeasance that is more complicated than traffic. Apparently, we only have two Samamish police officers on traffic duty at a given time. With our multiple schools and commuter traffic going off our plateau, additional resources to mitigate traffic, pedestrian conflicts are sorely needed. However, getting qualified individuals into the roles at the King County Sheriff's Office and Samamish Police has proved to be challenging. Therefore, I'd like to ask you to review the possible solution of investing into automated traffic safety cameras. Our neighbor city of Issaquah, which I've talked to them a little bit, and I'll get into that here in a second, have several of these units in operation currently. Based on their information, I requested and received from the city of Issaquah, automated traffic cameras have grossed over $1 million annually for the city of Issaquah's budget. They also have seen a lot of safety improvements there as well, and they commit their police resources to other issues. If we were to move forward as a city, Samamish, with the installation of automated traffic cameras, the city would need to invest into a new police officer to review the traffic results as is required under the RCW currently. But hiring one police officer for the city of Samamish is more cost-effective, and our current dilemma of not being able to fill multiple roles wouldn't be as challenging. In my view, doing nothing is not an option. Any parent who has driven around our schools knows this to be a serious risk, and it needs to be addressed. It's up to the city council to address it. I'll be emailing this language and this comment to you guys with the information. The city of Issaquah has a whole, their Issaquah city, uh, their, essentially their layout of how to do this, the template, so if it proves to be useful. In short, this is a win-win scenario that has been proven to be effective in Issaquah. Automated traffic, traffic safety cameras around our schools would mitigate pedestrian risk, create new revenue stream for the city. And my ask you this evening is to take action by directing city staff to review options to look into this, to determine if this would be a benefit to the city of Samamish. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak that didn't get a chance? Okay, did we have anyone that signed up online?
Yes. Per the reasonable accommodation, those who had pre-registered by 5 o'clock today, please raise your hand if you wish to give testimony. If you wish to speak regarding a public hearing topic, please do not raise your hand at this time. When the public hearing begins, you'll have an opportunity to make comments then. Okay, may begin your public comment.
Good evening, council. This is Mary Victor, Samamish, for 24 years. I wasn't going to speak during generalized public comment today, but I wanted to thank Jan Byrd, and I see Sharon Stein is sitting in the, um, the audience, for all the work that they've done, all the things they've done. It is very tiring to be a volunteer for as many years as they have, and I thought they gave a really excellent comment tonight. They had actually talked me into becoming a Washington Native Plant Steward, and I did so in 2019, which meant we did a lot of our work out in, when there was COVID, and we had to social distance from ourselves, and there were only five of us. We weren't able to do volunteer tasks because of the pandemic. But since that time, I have been able to do other volunteer work with Sebastian and the great team of people that sign up and help all the time. And just the volunteer coordination and the interns and the cost for mowing, and it's really sad if you plant the plants and they can't get watered. So I think everything that was asked for is exceptionally important. And I also want to just thank Jason Ritchie for coming, because I think speed around our schools can be deadly, and we need to not make it so. So thank you for both coming in, and I'll get yelled the rest of my time tonight. I just wanted to get my perspective. I think those are super important. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the public comment we have at this time.
Great, thank you so much. All right, council, next up is our consent calendar. I will entertain a motion for that unless anyone would like to poll anything or have any questions.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any other questions or comments on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Okay, on to proclamations. Councilmember Stewart, Lung Cancer Awareness.
Thank you. Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas lung cancer is the most common cancer and the leading cause of death worldwide, claiming the lives of approximately 1.6 million people annually, more than breast, colon, and prostate cancers combined. And whereas tobacco smoking is the primary cause of lung cancer, yet approximately 15% of lung cancer patients have no history of tobacco use, demonstrating the need to raise awareness of other significant risk factors, such as air pollution, asbestos, radon gas exposure, secondhand smoke, and genetic predisposition. And whereas research shows that 20% of women diagnosed with lung cancer have never smoked, and lung cancer in non-smokers is the sixth or seventh leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States, further underscoring the need for increased focus on lung cancer risks unrelated to smoking. And whereas early detection through low-dose CT screenings can significantly reduce lung cancer mortality by up to 20%, making public awareness of screening options essential for high-risk populations, including both smokers and non-smokers. And whereas National Lung Cancer Screening Day will be observed on Saturday, November 9, 2024, to promote life-saving lung cancer screenings, increase public knowledge of lung cancer risks, and encourage early detection efforts across the country. And whereas Lung Cancer Awareness Month, observed in November, aims to highlight the importance of screening, prevention, and equitable access to care while supporting efforts to close the gaps in cancer care and ensure that everyone has access to timely and effective treatment options. And whereas National Lung Cancer Screening Day provides an opportunity to support individuals and families affected by lung cancer, honor the memory of those who have lost their lives, and continue efforts to promote prevention, research, and access to comprehensive cancer care. Therefore, Mayor Kaylee Clark and the Samamish City Council do hereby proclaim November 2024 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to join in raising awareness, participating in screenings, and supporting efforts to reduce lung cancer deaths.
Great, and I know that's a personal one for you. I don't know if you wanted to mention that, but thank you for reading that. Next up, we have our Extra Mile Day. Councilmember Gupta.
Proclamation for Extra Mile Day, November 1, 2024. Whereas the city of Samamish acknowledges a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual residents collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteers, and service. And the city encourages its residents to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and neighbors. And Samamish is a community that chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up others. And the city acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America, and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1, 2024. Now therefore, Kaylee Clark, Mayor of the city of Samamish, on behalf of the city council, does hereby proclaim November 1, 2024 to be Extra Mile Day, and urges each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in their own lives, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, communities, countries, or world a better place.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, now we're on to our public hearings portion. So David, for, the first one is for two ordinances.
Great, Mayor, Council, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. With me this evening, I have Avril Brady, who's our current planning impermitment center manager. The first topic we have for hearings this evening is related to the SB 5290 Process Improvements Bill and the efforts the city is making to streamline our permit process and improve our administrative rules governing how permits are processed and the things applicants are required to do and the timelines associated with those. Avril will provide a present, a really short presentation, and then we'll turn it over to the council to open up the public hearing, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
In the spirit of this item, we are going to do this as quickly as possible. As David Pyle has introduced, this is administrative regulation updates. The background is to have the city be in compliance with Senate Bill 5290. So we are, this caused us to look at our review timelines and to look at how we will do annual reporting, starting in 2025. And as part of this, we wanted to make sure that our applications that we're getting in are as complete as possible and that our public noticing is as streamlined and as effective as possible. And also to reorg the things within our administration regulations so that the rules only apply to what they should apply to, which is our land use planning applications and not our construction applications or our public works applications. So as I'm sure you all vividly remember, from a couple of weeks ago, we had a great discussion about some of the noticing requirements. So based on the feedback that we received and given the support to have the review timelines for the different types of applications, whether or not they need a public hearing or public noticing, or if they're administrative, to be based on the data that staff had analyzed, to be longer than what was prescribed by the state, going back to the 21-day public comment period. So we struck out the change, so we're staying with the 21-day period. But with the longer review periods, this should be fine. Give people more time to read their mail, be able to look at any documents that we have online, and to get us that feedback, so we can make all of it better. So that's now in the packet. So now, we would like you to open the public hearing and have your deliberations. And hopefully, after all of this, that I'm sure you will do very expeditiously, that you will then be recommending that we take action on November 5. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Awesome. And quick question, did I miss something? Are we not taking action tonight because of something?
Yeah, there is a mandatory Department of Commerce period that we have to go through when making code changes.
Okay.
It's a 60-day period, and that will expire in the coming weeks prior to the November 5 meeting. And for anybody out there listening, I also just want to make sure that we're, we, that the November 5 meeting will in fact happen, because what we don't want is for people to understand that we're going to be taking action on November 5 and then change the date. So we'll have to make sure to be clear about that.
I'm looking at Rachel. I think it is on the 5th, right? Or Scott, sorry. Whoa, nice mustache.
Thank you. Along those lines, council, we polled council, and we got the majority of folks said that they were available to start early on the 5th. So if that still works for council, then we would be starting council meeting at 5:30 on the 5th.
Great, thank you. And then, one last question. The benefit is keeping, or we're closing the hearing tonight, not keeping it open. And the benefit is?
You have a lot on your agendas coming up in the next few weeks. So in order to conserve your time, which is very valuable, we were recommending that you open and close the public hearing this evening, just not take action until the 5th.
Awesome. Okay, sorry, I could have opened it first. Okay. So I am now opening the public hearing for these two ordinances. I will start with, if we have any comment for this item specifically? All good? Okay. And then, council, if you would like to, um, I'll open it up for you for comment, and then we'll close it.
Clarification. We just want to, we had no in-the-room commenters, but we'll just check online.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you.
If any pre-registered callers want to give public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Appears there's no public comment online.
All right, thank you. So I think I will close it now, and then we'll deliberate, unless that is not allowed. I think we're good. All right, so I'm closing this public hearing for the two ordinances. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, my recommendation would be that we, uh, leave it as the first meeting in November for now, and then we can specify at the end of the meeting, because I do think there might be a majority of folks who are interested in moving the meeting on Election Day, so. And I think we'll talk about that probably later in your city manager report, I'm guessing.
Sure, happy to chat about it later as well. Obviously, we will make ourselves available on whatever night council would like to hold the meeting. But that's the, the most recent information that we had from council was to hold it on the 5th, just earlier. So if council wants to change that, then that's your prerogative.
Okay, does anyone have anything on these items? Councilmember Trine.
Thank you, Mayor. David Pyle, just really quick on this ordinance. The, help me all understand what the, um, kind of like the process is, and then how the public has ability to voice their opinion. So when a, when a permit goes in the process or is applied for, how many days till they start from like prior, a pre-conference to the neighborhood meeting? Just walk me through real quickly the steps, if you don't mind.
On behalf of David Pyle, I'm happy to answer that question. So for applications that require a neighborhood meeting, so those are conditional use permits and preliminary subdivisions, preliminary short plats, UZDPs, those have to be held 120 days prior to the submittal of an application. And that's where an applicant is first going to get feedback from the community. They present their conceptual plans, and they have to provide copies of whatever they presented at that neighborhood meeting to staff, so we can add it to the record. Hopefully, that prevents any Bateson switches.
And who is notified?
As of today, it's anyone within a 1,000-foot radius of the site and down slope if it's within the erosion hazard near, if it's within the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies overlay.
And then, if I remember, if I recall reading that, that is this the time too, where if it's less than 20 parcels, then it would expand to, the 1,000 feet would expand to 20 parcels?
So with the proposed regulations, if, within the noticing radius, if it was less than 20, it would need to be increased until you've hit at least 20 other properties.
Appreciate that. And then, the last would be that if, if there are residents within the city of Samamish who are not within the 1,000 feet, and they wouldn't even be within the extended 20 parcels, but have requested to be notified by the city for these kind of notices, would those people be notified?
For a neighborhood meeting, because it's the applicant that sends out these notices, it's not a city sent out notice. It does not go out to other interested parties unless the applicant is doing their own additional outreach. However, once an application is received, if we have information of interested parties from anybody within the public, not even within Samamish, that they will then receive those notices that are sent out by the city.
By the city, but not by the developer for the neighborhood?
Correct, correct.
Meeting? Okay, that, is there, is there some way to change that, or is that something? I mean, why, why wouldn't we want people to know what's going on in the city?
That's something we could certainly look at in the future. There was, uh, the, the staff that was doing this work, we just didn't have the capacity to get to that level for the, the neighborhood meeting analysis, to see if that needed to be updated.
So let me, let me just see, because I think I got this, though. But, but if, if, if an application comes in prior to that neighborhood meeting, and, and anyone who wanted notification of it was then notified, because the application is the city's business.
Correct.
So that could then, if I, if a resident requested to be notified of any permit application, they would be notified?
Once an application is received by the city, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
What they wouldn't know, then, is the neighborhood meeting.
The neighborhood meeting happens before it's submitted to the city. So I, I hear what you're saying about there being a gap from the neighborhood meeting that the applicant sends the notices out for versus then after the neighborhood meeting, when an application is then submitted to the city. And then the notice of the city's application is what is distributed.
Tell me that, David.
So, so in everything Avril's saying, 100% I agree with.
I agree.
However, the, I want to add emphasis to the fact that the neighborhood meeting is completely the responsibility of the applicant. The city is not involved in developing the materials, scheduling, coordinating the neighborhood meeting. That is the applicant's opportunity prior to making application to the city to learn about what types of constraints or problems or issues might exist with the proposal. And it gives them opportunity to engage the community, to understand what, you know, what, ways in which the design could be enhanced. Or we often have seen applicants walk away from projects because they learn about easements or other constraints that the, that the property owner who's selling them the property didn't tell them about. So there's a lot of value in these neighborhood meetings. It really is intended to be for those immediate neighbors around the project. It's not intended for somebody who doesn't live in Samamish or somebody who lives in the opposite quadrant in the city to really know about or be part of that process. That comes later, when the formal application is made, and there's a sign put up and a mailing radius and notification of interested parties who want to know about all development in the city. If you wanted to, if you made a motion and you had a friend, and then you had ultimately three friends to pass the motion, you could amend Section 21 dot 09 dot 010, subsection F, subitem 2, to require that the notice of neighborhood meeting also be distributed to those parties of record that the city maintains as interested parties for all development in the city. And that generally comes in the form of email. We, we, we keep a running list of people who want to receive all of our notices. And what that would mean is that we would be giving their email out to the developer, and we would say that, hey, as part of your distribution of the neighborhood meeting notice, you do also need to send this notice out to this list of email recipients.
And could you repeat, I apologize, I kind of chicken-scratched this, but could you give me the, the code again?
Sure, yeah.
21 dash point?
Samamish Municipal Code, Section 21 dot 09 dot 010. And it's...
Subsection F.
Hold on, I had this just a second ago. Just a minute. Well, just when you think you have everything going your way is usually when this stuff starts to go... D, sorry. SMC 21 dot 09 dot 010, D, Neighborhood Meetings, Subsection 2, which is the distribution of the, of the notices. So it's 21 dot 09 dot 010, D, 2.
Yeah, because I just find, I mean, as somebody prior to being on the council and now being on the council and having a completely different role, I see how, one of the things that I'm, that I'm hoping for is public trans, public input, which leads to trust and transparency. And, and right now, what I sense from the community is a lack of trust of what's going on in the city. And mostly, it's because they don't actually know what's going on. And so one of the things that we ran into recently was the notification of a neighborhood meeting that was held, and nobody knew about it. that was held and nobody knew about it. And the property owners even that were just down the hill from the development didn't know that it was going on, didn't understand stormwater regs, didn't understand, they just didn't know what it meant to have this subdivision get built, built right above their property. And then what was unintended consequences of that was completely unknown to them. And, and then the project went forward and then they're like already behind the eight ball as far as having any kind of input into what would be a better use or the best use for the property in regards to their perspective. So whether it's the best use of the property, that's, that's a different story. But from their perspective, being downhill from it, they were, they were unhappy. And so it's like, how do, how do we help residents who, because we're a plateau, how do we help residents who are downstream from the development over the applications and the years that are going to take place of the development that's going to go on, on top of the hill? I will look for your assistance on make, do I have to make that amendment tonight or would that be on November 5th?
Well, we, we would probably, we would prefer that you make the motion and give us the direction to add that to the packet to be received on the 5th for final approval. What we don't want to do is not get final approval on the 5th and then continue it out as we have a lot of other items. We have many other items in the work plan and agenda for the council and we're, we're bumping up against the end of the year here.
Yeah.
So we would prefer that that is settled this evening and that you do give us direction on that definitively so that we can go ahead and make that change and integrate it into the packet that will be provided with the final ordinance for adoption on the 5th.
David is, so and Scott, you're part of this too, I guess, because the time, effort, staffing, cost to add, to make this adjustment, is that something that is like a, kind of a simple thing to do? Right? Because really all we're asking is that you change it so that the people who are requesting information from the city receive it for a neighborhood meeting?
So, so currently, yes. So currently, the regulations state that the applicant shall give notice of the date, time, and location of the meeting to all persons who would be entitled to receive notice of the proposed application under the requirements of the code, which is then in a different section. But we can add in addition to an email list of registered interested parties for all.
So it's a simple add?
Yeah. So it'd be just a, a section of sentence we could potentially add.
The one challenge with this that I see, and I could look to legal on this, but I've been scolded in the past by property owners or, or community members, if you will, for giving out their email, to the point where it has been really, they've been really upset that their email was shared. So we would want to make sure that we are, when people are joining this list and putting their email in to receive notices, that they're aware that this may be shared as public information. Because what I don't want to end up is in a scenario where somebody gets upset because we're sharing their email address. Been there, done that.
Carrie, can you speak to that, please?
Sure. I would say that it would be a best practice to have people knowingly provide their email, knowing that it would be subject to public disclosure. I think that's a best practice.
And is that then written into the code or do, is that just a communication when you sign up, you sign a disclaimer?
It's an administrative thing we would do. So we, we would set up the system by which we collect email addresses for people who are interested parties and make sure that they, they see the disclaimer and that they're aware that, that this is something that their email could be shared. I mean, I personally keep two email addresses. One is kind of my personal and the other one I, I use that I get all the spam through. So you know, you just have to manage your accounts.
Mayor Clark, I don't have anything else except the fact that I don't at this point know if there's the support of the council to move forward with a motion and if we should do that now or if we should wait.
Yeah, we do have one question. I don't know if it's with that. So we can maybe deliberate and then I'll come back to you. Yeah, go ahead. Deputy Mayor Howe.
My question, I mean, I take Councilmember Trine's point about transparency. The thing I was wondering about though is undue influence by people external to the actual situation. And by that, I mean, these folks could show up and maybe sway or push an agenda, for example, when here's residents who are going to be directly impacted and then people from outside the city or in the city, a different place, they show up at this meeting and they push their thing. I mean, is that a real thing or am I making that up?
I have not heard of any instances in the last five years that I've been here of there being non-Samamish residents attending and trying to influence.
Well, we've never, they haven't had notification. So what I'm, what I'm wondering though is if by providing the notification, this enables individuals to, who have an agenda to attend a meeting that they prior didn't know about and weren't privy to, it could just push their agenda and perhaps derail whatever conversation needed to happen between the developer and the residents. So that was my, that was one question. So I just didn't know about the possibility. It just occurred to me there could be that.
The, the notification of people beyond the noticing radius for a site could have all sorts of pros and cons, risks and benefits to its.
There could be a ripple effect that we, it's hard to, to judge. So I'm, in, in theory and concept, I, I like where you're headed with the transparency part. I wonder about people with their agendas, just kind of pushing things along. And to me, the thing that's the most important thing out of these neighborhood meetings is the fact that that communication with the developer takes place. And what doesn't happen unfortunately is that once I've given you that feedback, if you're the developer, I've given you my feedback, you don't have to do anything with it. You don't have to report back to me. You don't have to change your mind on anything. You don't have to tell me, you know, what, what you're going to do with that information. And if I was going to change anything about the neighborhood meeting, it would be that it was a better dialogue where there was, where a response was owed back to the participants. Of the, and any objections or concerns that were raised actually got a response. That, you know, to kind of enforce a dialogue, that would be the thing that I wouldn't want out of it. But I've asked my question. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Lamb.
I just wanted to clarify the example that Councilmember Trine is using to make an amendment. He's, he's, he's saying that there was somebody that was on a slope that wasn't notified because he's beyond the noticing radius and then all this, and then he was impacted, but he was beyond the noticing radius, right? So, but he didn't know, he wouldn't, that person wouldn't, wouldn't have even have known to sign up for the city notices anyways. So is that, so I don't understand how changing this would make any difference because to Councilmember Howe's point, it would just bring out a lot of people that are, for whatever reason, just wanted to maybe make it difficult for this builder. I, I'm not clear how that example would help the rest of the city.
We, we also do see challenges with neighborhood meetings where applicants, or excuse me, neighbors who participate in the neighborhood meetings also find or believe that there is a development proposal underway and there sort of is, although it's a concept at that point. They haven't held a pre-app. They haven't made application. They might not even have, or likely don't even have a traffic concurrency certificate yet, which is really a first step in the process. And we oftentimes see neighborhood meetings that then trigger kind of large public records requests about the development. And we always have to stress that there isn't a development proposal on the file with the city at this point. This is an applicant, this is a, this is a, this is a project proponent that is probing the viability of a project by holding, this is the first formal step that they're taking with the community to do this. So there's that side to it too. I'm trying to be completely honest about the things we see. We, we, we don't really see groups of people showing up to neighborhood meetings, but then again, they're not noticed right now. But we don't see groups of people showing up to development proposals that don't really live near it either. Usually we see people engaged in development proposals that live near it or have a very connected interest to the development and the neighborhood, if you will. So, you know, it's, I, I, it couldn't hurt on the one hand, but on the other hand, it, it might result in additional parties being involved that, that could result in a different conversation in the end.
So I had another question. So I actually got a notice from a developer at that there's a three lot, short plat being built. I'm right at the fringe of the 1,000-foot radius, noticing radius. And there's already a sign up at that lot. So where in the process is this person? Like, was, this is a neighborhood meeting. It's happening at the library. So is, has he like made a formal permit application already?
Nope.
But the sign's already up?
Oh, that, that's interesting if the sign's up. Maybe it's an old sign. I do want to point out that I just received a note from one of the, one of our staff who are listening in that the sound died. So we want to check the external parties and see if there's sound working. Okay.
So if you received a neighborhood meeting notice, but there's already a sign up.
Yes.
Occasionally, someone will submit an application. It dies on the vine and then a new application comes in, but they have to do a new neighborhood meeting. I'd be curious to know which site this is. I
We, we have had projects that were under review that died on the vine, so to speak. They, they clocked out. The sign was still up because we hadn't removed it. And somebody came in right behind them, another developer and bought, bought the interest in it, you know, and, and went and did the neighborhood meeting because that's a requirement. We've also seen applicants where their, their own project timed out because they took too long. And in order for them to get back in the door with a new application, they have to hold another pre-app, hold another neighborhood meeting because we always we're very much sticklers about following the process. So the, it could have been the same developer doing a whole other neighborhood meeting simply because their project clocked out because they took too long, which does happen quite a bit.
Okay. I'll let you know what the address is. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, you guys, for all your work on this and to the planning commission too. I tuned into the meetings and watched, watched a lot of that. There was two things. One was about the, the sign that's erected onsite as we were just talking about and planning commission went back and forth about lots of different designs and what, what might be graffiti proof and QR codes, all that kind of thing. Are you guys still kind of working through what that new sign might look like? And I know you had talked about different signs, Avril, that you kind of see in other jurisdictions which are smaller, more, you know, for a pedestrian walking by and a kind of at, at eye level, which I actually am more partial to too, because when I, I kind of geek out on those signs too, and I always read them and go, I have no idea what the sign says, right? I don't know what it says. So have you, are you still kind of brainstorming what those signs will look like? Have you any idea?
We, we have been brainstorming. We are also in the, the process of doing our contract procurement for our onsite noticing for the next budget cycle. So as part of that RFP that we did, it was both for the signs that we've had for the last several years, the big massive ones, as well as asking them, what other types of signs are you able to produce and what are the, the cost points?
Yeah.
For doing something different. So that way, whomever we go with would know that there could be some variability. So as part of this whole brainstorming is we are looking at other cities. We're trying to get a better feel for what people are comfortable with. And we do want to come back to planning commission so that we can have a, like a director's policy or guide for if you have this size project, you should have this type of sign. If you've got a bigger project, you should have a bigger sign. So that way it's not a free for all for every single project. We want to have, you know, a couple of different options and that'll nail down, those discussions will nail down what the options actually would be.
Because I see those giant signs around and mostly I see them as they're lying down on the ground, you know. So I think for a certain amount of time there, they're good, they're visible, but they probably last about a week and then they eventually fall down and it takes somebody to go back out and erect them. And that takes time and money to send somebody back out. So I just wonder how useful those giant signs really are in the long term, but I'm sure you guys will kind of discuss that. And just my final question was in light of Councilmember Trine's comments. If we were to decide, to decide to do that and the people who would be added to that email list, would, are we suggesting that these are people who've already signed up for city notifications on just kind of everything, like send me the newsletter, send me the, you know, is that the, is that the mailing list we're talking about?
So the, the change to the code could be a segment of a sentence to be, to have a citywide interested parties email list. So if that is adopted, then it would be a business practice for the city then, or for staff to decide, do we send out an email to everybody who has ever sent us an email saying, you are welcome to sign up for an all-citywide interested email list. Please submit. And we could have a JOT form online so they can understand that this could be open to public disclosure. Expel out what it's for, what it does so that they can read it. So we, I would not feel comfortable signing up anybody for them. I would want them to sign up for themselves after they read the terms and conditions. But that would be a business practice. That would not have to be something that's codified.
And we, we could also place a JOT form on the website that allows people to quickly sign up for this, for specifically to receive development permit related stuff with a disclaimer on there. The, the email addresses that we do have are remnant from the GovDelivery era, which was a tool the city used for a period of time. And there were different things you could click on in GovDelivery. You'd say you wanted to get things about sustainability or development permits or comp plan. And I think we've steered away from using that tool and we're, we're using other tools now. So we would have to go back into that, that, we still have the email addresses and the people. We'd have to send a message out saying, hey, we're thinking that we're going to be doing this. Before we release your email on the list, we want you to verify that you want to be on here. Please go into the JOT form and enter your email and click the box that you had, accept the disclaimer and you will be added back to the list for distribution of permit info.
Yeah, because I, I think it's, from my perspective, you know, I like to get a lot of information and just like you, David, I have one email for spam, one email for the things I really want to read. And I wouldn't want to start getting a waterfall of information from the city, you know, and as a, as it just, as a resident. So I think it would be better for someone to go in and sign up for it as opposed to being signed up for it. Because I, and I also just don't know how useful all that information really is and what time people have to, to go through all of that. So possibly, yes, if it was something that a resident could go in and sign up for it rather than the other way around, because I think that would, I don't think that would be really useful. And I don't think it would get us the transparency really we're looking for because sometimes it's, it's information overload and nobody reads it, right? So, okay. Thank you.
I guess two questions. I don't know how Jim would feel about more data management. Just curious on that end. I don't know what that, like I said, there might be like two people to sign up or like.
What it would probably be is an active Google, Google sheet that, that is auto-populated from a JOT form.
Okay.
And we would make sure to include on the JOT form, the disclaimer that says your email will be potentially shared as public information, wanting you to accept that. And then also it would indicate, and then they would receive an email saying, hey, you've been added to this list. You can accept, expect to sporadically or periodically receive notices related to development permits, including at the phase of neighborhood meeting for questions on the, the relevance of these or what, what these are. You know, you could reach out to the following staff people. So that if somebody gets something about a neighborhood meeting, they can understand what that is. We already have guides online about what these things are. We could thread that into all of this. One of the things we're going to be doing in the second part of December and the early part of January is retooling everything in our applications online because we're going to have a lot of new information related to new codes that were adopted, a new comp plan, new codes. So we're, we could do that at the point, point in time when we're updating everything else.
And then other question, if anyone was just curious, where do they And then, other question, if anyone was just curious, where do they find that information now? It is, they would have to contact staff, right? If there was, like, something?
Right. Currently, they'd have to reach out to us.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's, we, we do have our legal notices page with all the project notices on there, on the website. We do have the Community Development Department on the website. We have the Permit Center as a subset of that. Within the Permit Center, there are all sorts of user guides related to different components of the project, so, or, excuse me, of the permit process. So, you know, we, you know, I think this would be an okay addition. I, I'm not as concerned about data management, because I think containing it to a Google Sheet, using a JOT form automates it. And then simply, the planners simply go in and harvest those email addresses, and put them in, you know, in Xport, and send that to the, the, the individual who's proposing the development and doing the neighborhood meeting, and that they then send out an email, and we could include specific directions about what needs to be in the subject line, and what needs to be in the body of the email.
Yeah, and then you said this is something you might be able to do, like, next year when you're revamping everything.
In the beginning of the year, correct?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, I could go either way. I don't really know if, yeah. Scott?
Mayor and council, I appreciate the, the detailed conversation we're having here. I just want to remind, to pull us back just a little bit, some of these components that David and Avril are talking about, our internal processes, that we can adjust and amend as necessary, and that we don't have to nail down as part of this particular component. So, I want to try to keep us at the higher level, so that we can get clear direction to move forward, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm, thank you, David, and thank you, City Manager. I do, I, I look at the, the overall process and what you guys are putting forward, and I'm totally in support of it. I would like to make a motion to amend those section, or SMC 21.09.101. I believe it's subsection D, item 2, on notification that we add a sentence there that would notify Sammamish residents by email, neighborhood meetings.
Second? All right, moved and seconded. Did anyone want to speak to that motion, or do you want to?
Yeah, just real quick, because what I really think is, it's going to be about five or seven people. From, from my experience in five years here in Sammamish, the, there are about five to seven people who are really interested and are watching what we're, what's going on in the city, are kind of have a watch. We don't, we don't have a newspaper that's actually pushing forward stuff that's saying, "Hey, what, what's going on?" And so, I think really, the five to seven, maybe nine people, will actually be just taking a look at this, and most of the time, I think it will be for, there will be no action that they'll take, because it's already something that they expected or are expecting. It's for the off, the one-off project that might come into play, and we, we have seen that in the past. And at this point, Carrie, I think I'm just going to leave, legal probably would tell me not to say anymore, because there have been some items that we, there's history here in the city that allows us, that has allowed us to purchase property. And so, because of the active participation of residents in Sammamish, prior to me being on council, so at this point, I'd just like to just say that there's been some real positive things that have come from, say, the seven or nine people who would actually push forward something that would say, "Hey, we think that the city should move in this direction," or "The developers should move in this direction," or "Concurrency needs to take place here because of these things," prior to the development even starting, and that the result of that would be a positive benefit to the community in the long run. And so, sometimes, highest and best use, and David, you might argue with me on this one, but sometimes highest and best use is not what we think it should be, and sometimes it becomes something different that actually benefits the whole community. So, I hope that wasn't too encriptive, but, you know, I'll just say, Parker Platte. So. Yes, Carrie?
Councilmember Stewart, you want to speak to this motion?
Yeah, I absolutely support more transparency, but I'm not in favor of being that specific in our language, and just giving the direction to staff to figure out the best way to be more transparent and get the word out. So, I think that's the feedback that I'd like to leave it at, because I think when we get real specific about emailing Sammamish residents, we don't have an email for all Sammamish residents, et cetera, et cetera. So, I feel like that doesn't need to be in the code. Thanks.
Carrie?
Thank you, Mayor, if I may. When Councilmember Trinh was speaking to his motion, I have to admit that it was not entirely apparent to me what he was referring to with regard to prior land acquisitions. I just wasn't sure what that reference was. And then I heard his motion be to somehow email all Sammamish residents, which I just don't know that that's practically feasible. And so, I think that's kind of the point that Councilmember Stewart just made. So, I wanted to echo that point, that I just don't know if it's practically feasible. So, perhaps just trying to figure out how to maybe post these types of things on the website, so anyone who's interested could locate it there. But again, I don't know that we can email everyone in the city.
It was those who request to be emailed.
For a particular project, or for all time?
It depends on what their request, yeah, for projects that are being permitted, that enter into the permit process. It's not all residents, yes, it's all projects, if that's what they want.
I just hope that clarifies for the council what the motion is actually trying to accomplish.
All right, so it has been moved and seconded. I think we will take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
So, who are the two ayes? Trinh and Howe. Okay, so that amendment fails. All right, council, is there anything else before we leave this to November? All right, I think we are good on this one.
Great, thank you, Mayor. So, moving on to the next item.
Yeah.
Back again, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. The next item on the agenda this evening is consideration of the city's critical areas update. We've, this is the 12th meeting we've held on this topic as a city, so that includes Planning Commission meetings and council meetings. We've had a draft in place that has not substantially changed for several months now, since it left the Planning Commission, and we have received feedback from the council and made edits in response to council direction at the last meeting. Some, some adjustments were made in response to things you asked us to do, and we're here tonight to hold a public hearing, similar to last, and Avril will go over this again, but to open and ideally close the public hearing, and pending action on the 5th. Avril?
Thank you. Hello again, Avril Beatty, Department of Community Development, current Planning and Permit Center manager. We are here this evening to discuss the Critical Area Ordinance update. We have before you tonight, similar to the streamlining regulations, proposed amendments, we are looking to bring this to you for discussion, and to open and close a public hearing, if so able, so that way we can come back on November 5th with something that can swiftly be moved upon. So, I'm sure you are all familiar with this lovely timeline by now, all of our various city council and planning commission and joint hearings that we have had to discuss and work on and, and amend these regulations based on best available sciences. So, within your packet this evening, we have lots of information presented in many different ways, because, as with all restaurants, presentation is everything. So, if you don't like your order in one way, we will rearrange it in another. So, we have a clean version of the code, we have our red line straf, red line strike draft version, and we have our matrix for all the fun cross-referencing that we like to do. We have received comments from the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and from the Department of Ecology, where we have provided responses to those comments in Exhibits 4 and 5, respectively. We also have received comments from the Snoqualmie Tribe that we have provided responses to, as well as the ordinance related to said red lines, along with meeting dates, and for public comment opening and closing. I now will present Nell Lund.
Do it wrong? Okay. It's good to be before you again, I'm Nell Lund with Facet, and it's not clear to me if my colleague Dan is on remotely, or if the audio... Okay, audio is working, and we're good to go? Great. So, he's available when we get into questions. So, since we discussed this topic last, some updates and follow-up occurred, we reviewed the qualified professional criteria for critical area reports in landslide hazard areas in response to comments. That was discussed with multiple parties, the Sammamish Water Plateau, we checked again with HWA Geoscience as our consultant, and so that, those updates are reflected, just to ensure there's good rigor in reporting under appropriate circumstances, without being unnecessarily onerous. That was certainly a consideration. And then, in response to feedback, the language was updated for building expansion limits in town center. So, the language now says 1,000 square feet, which it previously did, but the additional language of, or, 10% of the site area, whichever is less, was added. Okay, and then, in your packets, the, the draft code update that you received, we, we responded to the comments from Department of Fish and Wildlife in that document. We had time to do that. We made some additional strike-through and track changes to strengthen the no-net-loss language, add some riparian terminology as applicable. And generally, the changes in response to WDFW comments were minor edits for clarity and to strengthen protections, making sure that we made reference to the priority habitats and species list as appropriate, for example. However, Ecology's comments came in late enough that we didn't, we didn't feel we had adequate time to thoroughly review and address those in this draft. So, we have laid those out with clear acknowledgement of one's recommendations that we do think should be adopted, and the associated language changes in the code, so you can review and hopefully approve those recommended changes in response to Ecology comments. Just a brief overview of what those are. They, they recommended that under the applicability section of the code, that there be a statement about state, federal, and local regulations, and associated permitting needing to be in compliance. That was previously in some other locations in the code, but putting it up front under applicability is clear and concise, and we recommend adopting that. There, under the reasonable use section of the code, there was a reference to a date, I think December 31st, 2021, and I believe that's associated with the previous code update, and it was determined not to be needed, so we recommend striking. Additionally, we added some, we recommend adopting some proposed criteria for the limited buffer reduction for category four wetlands. Basically, it's, you know, looking at the wetland in the landscape context, so is it associated with riparian area, you know, does it, is it in close proximity to another high-functioning wetland? So, those, or is it connected via surface water? They have, they laid out specific criteria that we recommend adopting in code. And in that same section, there's a provision that used the term buffer reduction, which Ecology questioned the use of. Upon review, the intent of that provision was to refer to the permitted alterations, such as crossings. So, we recommend just changing that language to reflect that. And then, the last one is pretty straightforward, under the wetland definition, in addition to the standard state and federal definition that everyone adopts, and that I believe it's, you know, you're legally required to adopt, there's a description of the core delineation manual and the regional supplement that are used for identification of wetlands. That criteria is actually in the critical areas ordinance, as opposed to the definitions section. So, it's, it's not necessary in definitions, and not really appropriate. We, we recommend approving, striking.
Before we turn it over to the council for the public hearing, I just wanted to highlight some things and the steps in the process that we've taken. So, if you all recall, we started down this process by doing a gap analysis and review of best available science. That informed us as to where we needed to make some changes to show compliance with best available science. We also then identified additional edits to the code, which would be appropriate to make it more user-friendly. The code at some, some points is difficult to read and understand, so we did make some usability edits as well, and those are threaded in and listed in the exhibit that outlines the code changes. One of the tensions with this update cycle has been around bigger buffers versus higher quality buffers, and also around managing patches of things in the landscape, so an independent area versus looking cohesively across the city and understanding the relationships that the resources have with each other. That's all described in the science, and we, we hear from some of our, our agency counterparts that they want bigger buffers, right? And, but none about, none of the, the management recommendation with their larger buffer actually addresses the quality of the buffer. So, one of the things that we're doing is we're, we're trying to meet in the middle and say that, you know, we, we, we looked at some scenarios as a city with much bigger buffers, that ended up rendering large swaths of the city that are already developed as legally non-conforming. And when you develop, when you render large portions of your housing stock as legally non-conforming, there are many inherent challenges related to, if your house burns down, what happens? How do you get insurance for it if it's non-conforming? What is the property value with something that's non-conforming? It's, it's almost kind of like the analogy I make is a total reconstructed title car, that really, it's not quite as desirable for somebody to live in, because there's a lot more restrictions on it. So, we tried to meet in the middle, and we focused on the quality of buffers, whereby we're looking at adding native vegetation, removing invasives, adding what we call structure, so under, you know, emergent vegetation, understory, middle story, canopy, and trying to make those improvements. We feel that it is compliant with best available science, and ultimately puts the city on a path to a far higher quality environment over time, while still on balance, also allowing us to retain area for development, retain, or legal conformance status with existing residences that were built in compliance with codes. And the code package that you see in front of you also cohesively looks at how wetlands and streams and slopes are all interrelated. So, that's what you're seeing. It's, it's complicated, and we appreciate all the time and effort you've put into reading it, and the feedback you've given us, but we are here tonight to present what we feel is the final code package that is compliant with best available science, and looks at really ultimately improving the, the environment in the city over time.
All right, council, so I am now opening the public hearing for the adoption of an ordinance for the critical area regulations. We will start with public comment. James?
James?
So I entered the council room today, and I did a double take. I'm like, who's that over there? Oh, my gosh, that's Jason Ritchie. When's the last time I saw Jason? And in my mind, I gauge everything off of, I think, COVID, like 2020. I'm like, okay, so it was before COVID. I'm like, man, it's probably been about five years since I saw Jason. And then I was looking at this packet, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, it's been, I don't know if I've ever seen a 1,200-page packet. I mean, it's probably close. We might have had one pre-2020, but it's been a while. And then I got to thinking about the amount of work that's gone into this critical areas update and into the comp plan. And I'm like, I think we're probably two years in. Like, we're getting close. My profession is a, my expertise, I guess, in my arena is construction project controls, P6 scheduling. And P6 is a computer program that puts together 50,000-line item sequences of events to finish a construction project on time. And it is very rare that we ever finish construction projects on time. I mean, they always push out, but it's impressive that we put out these long-term agendas, our long-term plan for the city, and there's no choice but to finish on time, and we're a month away. So congrats to city staff on pulling this off. I don't agree with everything in the critical areas ordinance, but I think you guys are much better than me. You sit up there, and there's pros and cons to everything. You're not going to agree with everything. You're going to basically weigh everything and then decide, you know, which way you think something should go off of weighing it. And so I think this is a good ordinance. The only thing I'd encourage staff to do, if there's time or council to do, is just polish it off as far as the wildlife corridors go. I wonder, like, okay, if there's two streams and there's a wildlife corridor in between, like, how often do I need a wildlife corridor? Are they, if there's one, you know, at the top of the stream, does there need to be one in the middle of the stream and then one at the bottom? And can I put it, you know, in the steep slopes that I'm not going to use, or do I have to use buildable property? And if I have to use buildable property, do I get that credit for my density calc's or TDRs or whatever, you know, based off of how you give that away? But all in all, it's a great, staff's done a great job. You guys have done a great job. And if there's time to just polish it off, go for it. If not, I'm sure it evolves. I mean, that's really the newest portion of the code, something to think about as people come in and start to share their experience with you. But all in all, way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Did we have online signer-uppers?
Yes, those who have preregistered, please raise your hand if you wish to give public comment. Okay, you can begin your public comment.
Hi, this is Mary Victor, Samamish, for 24 years. I do have comments that I think really do need to get considered. It's not going to hurt your code. It'll make it stronger, and I think you have time to put in a few small changes before November 5. I would hope that you would take my public comment and other people's that make sense. First of all, for emissions, if you're going to have phones and cable that get exempted, you should have fiber and internet just updated for modern. There's one page on page 23, you need to put the word "apply." That's a typographical error from too much deleting. I think you also need to look for private wells for Class III KARA and underground storage tanks, like for septic tanks and/or heating oil, but maybe that needs to get done for every permit in the city and not just for critical areas. I would suggest that you add a diagram in the steep slope definition to show the top, the toe, and the slope. I think that would help, because it's really only mentioned, and then it's part of a landslide, so it gets missed a lot. That would bring some importance to it. And the comp plan people also believe in putting diagrams in code as well. One really important thing is you're trying to get 1,000 square feet of a footprint. That does not match with stormwater code. We did a lot of work, and if you're in a landslide hazard area, you can have up to 200 square feet of impervious added, and then you'll need a drainage review. And for tamarack and Inglewood historic plats, you get zero square feet, and that's based on a lot of code from 2016 to 2019 that's been adopted. So please don't just do the 1,000-square-foot add-on for landslide hazard area. There are also, a lot of houses were built when 5,000 was the drainage review threshold in 2,000, so you have homes with 4,999 square feet and 1,9900 square feet. And if you add 1,000 feet, they can also go up three stories, so you're letting them add 3,000 square feet to something maybe didn't have a drainage review. So it's just far too big a number, particularly for landslides, and you can see if you think it fits for wetlands or not. Also, on the TDR code, you are kind of removing erosion hazard near sensitive water basies, specialistic overlay. It's okay, the code that you're deleting, but you need to keep the definitions, because the definitions show on the maps, and the maps will be used for people for their critical area reports. So there's a couple changes, I said, just don't strike everything. And here's the thing, not to strike, keep the definitions, and also for no disturbance, since those are on the Samamish property tool. And Avril, he had said that maps are not going to go away. You really need that, so you can be able to have the critical areas reports work. There should be a way to recover from illegal activities. I've suggested that buffers of 50 feet can be reduced, but should be 5 or 15 for landslide. Let's just not let them go to zero all the time like in the past, and steep slopes get missed a lot still, so we need to work on that. For financial guarantees, when projects stall, there should be a $20,000, $5,000 vegetation cash bond and $100,000 per lot, so the city can access it if the development fails. There should also be emphasis, so vegetation will not be removed. There's too many people that get their permit permitted, they run out, and they cut too many trees, and they kill all the vegetation right away. So I think those things need to get looked at. I sent a page with some attachments, and I hope that you will use those.
Thank you.
Please let public comment have updates. Thanks.
Thank you.
We have one other online commenter.
Paul Stickney, Samamish. Got some comments for you this evening on the critical area. What I want to talk about is symbiotic benefit for wildlife and humans. In the PSRC four-county region, about 61% of the land is resource, which in a way is 100% wildlife and zero for human habitability. In the rural lands, it's about 21% of the four-county area. Those are homes on roughly 5 to 20-acre parcels. That's about 80% wildlife, 20% humans. And in the urban area, the focus is on human habitability, and wildlife is a part of it. But keep in mind the whole context in looking at this, on how to apply these CAO rules in a urban environment. In the city of Samamish, about 96% of our land is open space, R1, R4, and R6. And the other 4% is R12 and higher sub-areas and our town center. Also, our city really wants, and I completely agree, high community character, sense of place, trees, wildlife, water, and natural beauty. So now I'm going to turn into my third topic and then make a recommendation. In looking at critical area ordinances now and in the past, I believe Samamish in general, on a factor of 10, that our ordinances are nine, and I appreciate strong protection. I think that should be, maybe with a change or two, but that should be applied to the 96% of Samamish. But in the 4% of Samamish, I suggest potentially working on high critical ordinance function for wildlife and wetland buffers, but potentially reducing those, as is evidenced by Snohomish County Innovative Development Application. Woodenville, urban streams. Kent Valley, for specific streams. They target things where it's appropriate to lessen buffers for another goal, which is land use that benefits human habitability. So if you had a nine in 96% of the city and a six or seven in 4% of the city, that's still 8.9 citywide, which is darn strong protection. So I suggest you put in a placeholder to investigate innovative design in dense urban centers over the next couple of years. That's my comment. Appreciate the chance.
Thank you. All right, was there anyone else?
No other commenters?
Thank you. All right, I know there is interest in not closing yet, so I will let council deliberate first before either closing tonight or whatever council decides. So Councilmember Farrell?
Thank you, Mayor. You guys, I just had one question or one issue I just wanted to raise. I was reading the letter from the tribe, from the Snoqualmie Tribe, and their feedback for us was on best available signs on site potential tree height. And David, I think that was probably what you were referring to about you were looking for more quality buffers as opposed to, so is that kind of what your remarks were referring to when you were talking about this kind of, the feedback from the tribe?
Yes, I did feel like he was kind of filling in the gap, since that wasn't in our slideshow presentation, but something that is addressed in the packet. As is noted in the response memo that I put together, city of Samamish, you know, as they looked at site potential tree height as one potential guidance option for implementing best available science, that needed to be balanced with other priorities for the city, particularly addressing housing under the 2050 vision. And additionally, the city already has very strong stormwater management standards, which the guidance from WDFW does mention in urban areas. I think I cite them in the memo, that they recommend, you know, focusing on buffer quality, stormwater management, and restoration opportunities. And so that was really the emphasis as we worked with the city, given the fact that there was concern about increasing nonconformance and, you know, realizing something that would improve buffer functions in practice instead of just widen buffers on paper, I think, was the direction of our discussion.
Okay, thank you. And they made reference to indigenous knowledge being used when we're writing policy and looking at issues going forward, and I think that's something, and I know you always talk with the tribe when we're talking on different issues, but that was just, that's a phrase that's new to me, and I just wanted to bring it up at the meeting. I wanted to acknowledge that I read their letter, that's important feedback for me, and to kind of understand and to think about indigenous knowledge, especially when we're talking about the natural world.
So we have threaded that into this draft. It is included in the best available science definition that is part of this ordinance, proposed ordinance. We've also threaded that into the comprehensive plan and added language regarding recognition of indigenous knowledge and the roles of, you know, those that have lived here a lot longer than we have, and their understanding of the land and some of the things we could be doing in land use and land practices. This also comes from something that's called culturally modified trees. So we're going to be getting into this as we update our tree rules in the future. So we're kind of planting the, no pun intended, seeds, so to speak, for us to start to nudge into some of the things that we've been working with them on related to tree management. So that, I think, is a really good change that we're making here. We also did look at the cities that were referenced, both in the WDFW letter and in the tribe letter, and Thurston County, not comparable at all. Langley, not comparable at all. And Accordis only adopted under duress because of Growth Management's Hearings Board appeal, because they were proposing to actually reduce their buffers as part of their critical areas update, and we're left with 50-foot wetland buffers. So, you know, again, not comparable. So we feel, like I said, that we are compliant with best available science. We've considered the management recommendations from the agencies. We've threaded in, where appropriate, those tools where they work for Samamish, and we have focused on improvement in quality all around, and we feel that this code does a far better job looking to the future at making incremental improvements, removing invasives, restoring with natives, but also allows people to continue to, where they were legally permitted to do so, use their developed property.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilmember Gupta?
Thank you, and thank you for the note that this is the 12th public meeting on this. I recognize this has been a very heavy lift. This is a very dense piece of code. I just had a question about the DFW matrix. It looks like the last item talks about establishing a monitoring and adaptive management program to evaluate the CAO over time in meeting no net loss requirements. And in the staff response, it says this is a suggestion but not required. Is that, could you just talk me through what that looks like in practice?
Yeah, as we've talked through that, that's a broad checklist recommendation. It is a good practice to, you know, review the policies and be sure that they're achieving the intended goals, but the resources and the administrative programs to implement that can be challenging to develop, and under this framework, we didn't really dive into detail on that.
Yeah, we strive to monitor, and we have a very good permit database. I mean, there's issues with the permit system itself that we want to fix. But that said, you know, our staff are very well-trained to input data into a system that we can track. So from that sense, it's automated. The challenge here is actually doing longer-term review and follow-up on, you know, we stopped monitoring at five years. So say you develop, mitigation's required. We require monitoring. We go out and look at projects. We do a sign-off at the end of five years. We're not going out in 10 years and looking at the success rate. And I think that's part of what they're getting at, is in the long term, how successful are we? But to do that, we then need to take city general fund resources and pay staff to go out and do that, that longer-term monitoring. So while we are compliant with the requirements of the code, we could do better in the long run. However, that is dependent on our having staff resources to do that. That's a conversation you're going to have a little later here on the agenda, so just understanding the constraints we have in that area. We don't want to sign ourselves up for something we can't afford to do.
Great, thank you. So just for clarity, that's a suggestion from the checklist and not a suggestion from us to applicants?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Trine?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Farrell spoke about the letter to the tribe. Can you help me understand the definition or your understanding of the Samamish is a core urban city within the urban growth area? Could you help me understand what your interpretation of that is?
Yeah, so Samamish is part of the larger urban growth area, is not, for example, Snoqualmie. It is also, it's a cities and towns category. We were not trying to differentiate here in our conversation when we set up this response letter, something other than what we are. We're in the cities and towns category, so to be clear on that. However, we wanted to also identify that we are all three different development pattern types. We are ex-urban, suburban, and urban as a city. So what we are not is rural, you know, outside of the UGA land. And when looking at the recommended management practice that WDFW provides, which is known as the site potential tree height tool, it results in very large buffers that would be appropriate for maybe a forced practices type of activity, where you're setting up roads and harvest areas. It might be appropriate for a rural area where you're laying out a very low-density division of land and some homes, you know, on the acre scale, one home per acre, may and lower. And in Samamish, we're mostly built out, if you look at our urban growth capacity study and our buildable lands, and when we started to apply the site potential tree height tool to different parts of the city... to different parts of the city, we were noticing that there were regular occurrences where entire neighborhoods were rendered non-conforming because they would be within a wetland buffer.
Thank you.
Or, excuse me, I would say, sorry, I want to correct that, a stream riparian area buffer.
Yeah, because, I mean, initially, when my reading of this letter on just a first pass two days ago, and then re-looking at it again today, and, and then doing a little research on what is the definition of a core urban city, it does, that is not Samamish. So, because when I look at the definitions, possibly you could have a satellite city. That was kind of referenced by the gentleman who made public comment here tonight in reference to somewhere like Kent. That's not us either. And, and so what it led me to do is look at Vision 2050 and to say, okay, so what does the Puget Sound Region Council see Samamish as? And they call it a term I hadn't heard before, but they call it an edge city. So it, which means that we're on the edge of the urban growth boundary within the continuous section of it, in the towns and cities, as you've stated. And therefore, in my opinion, I believe that we should be treated differently. And then, so to me, it's kind of like if, and maybe this isn't a fair thing to ask, but if I read your response as a, as a tribal leader and got confused by that, I would be thinking more of Bellevue or Seattle, which would be a core urban city. And then your response would then be appropriate. But I don't see your response being appropriate if I was an, if it was said that I was an edge city. With all that being said, I'm, it's not, hey, can't change the past, but going forward now, here's where I want to, here's where I'm headed. In the, in the ordinance here, you have buffer averaging. So if, because, see, I want to honor what, what the tribe is trying to do. I get it that the buffers are too big. That's what you, correct? Okay. If we, if we were to go with their formula, yeah, the buffers are too big and it's really for a different application. So what I'm looking at is, I think our buffers are too small still to honor what they're trying to get at. So my question is, if I average the buffers, do I reduce the number of privately-owned homes or property or parcels that would then fall out of that category you were mentioning earlier, which I now forget, distressed? Does that, does that, does that reduce the number enough that says, hey, the, as another public comment was made about the wildlife corridors, could I, could we actually, oh, heaven forbid, actually have wildlife corridors that run upon our riparian buffers and allow us to actually build connectivity within a larger buffer zone? Because now by code, SMC code, I can build within the 30-foot part of it, the outside edges. So if, then I can put trails in the outside edges for transportation or a multimodal type of transportation that's going to, I get that that's future down the road. But you understand where I'm headed, David? I'm trying to set it up so that if we pass this thing, it actually benefits the city in the long term when we're looking at our connectivity and multimodal transportation, and at the same time, put in wildlife buff, corridors, and protect the quality of our riparian buffers, and reduce the risk of people coming out of the woodworks and saying, you've passed this policy that then makes it so my property is worth less, which I think that's, part of me thinks that's BS, but...
So, so I, I think it already does all of that.
It already does all that.
The buffers already have increased with this update. They have not increased at the level the site potential tree height tool would result in. And we're also focusing on quality, which really is speaking to habitat as well in riparian areas as well, you know, water quality, habitat structure, all of those things. And, you know, I, I stand by this, that I'm really proud of this update and the work that went into it, and I feel that it sets the city on the right path. It also balances things like land available for housing. It considers things like infrastructure needs. We heard from a commenter this evening about utilities and we, you know, many of the things we heard Mary speak to, we feel are, are administrative tasks in implementing the rules. Almost all of what she spoke to is a matter of creating graphics for handouts or, you know, how we interpret what a utility is. So we feel all those have been addressed already in the code, and we've met with her and talked about those. But in, in the case of what you're speaking to, I, I think that it, it already does it. And averaging, the way the averaging tool works in the code is on a case-by-case basis. It's only allowed when there is some opportunity for you to counter that averaging with a net improvement through a, a critical areas report and a restoration or mitigation plan. So averaging does not work in the sense that you average across the whole city. It works on a case-by-case basis and is only allowed when you can demonstrate no net loss of ecological function, that you've avoided and minimized the impact, and that it results in a net improvement over time by way of mitigation.
I would just add that this code update also strengthens buffer protections in striking outright code reduction provisions.
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Buffer averaging was left to still allow some of that flexibility as long as, you know, the reduction is, does not exceed 25% and that the same total buffer area is retained and that the functions and values of the area are retained. For example, you couldn't take out a buffer area that's forested and replace it with lawn. It needs to be, you know, equivalent functionally.
Was there any reason for, thank you, by the way. That's where I was headed, so, thank you. The, I, I think it's on the clean copy, it's on page 241. On the striped copy, it's on page 479. And it's that chart about the streams and the types. And so I got a little confused because on the strike, you take out type S, and I think that's like our four major streams, Zachuse, Ebreit, George Davis, Jacob, Laughing Jacobs Creek. And so, and, and so the buffer, there's no, then on that chart, there's no footage, which kind of scares me a little bit, but...
So, so type S is a shoreline of the state?
Okay, it's a shoreline.
And, and that has over 20 cubic feet per second of flow. None of our streams in the city classify as, it'd be like, Samamish River Slough would be one of those. Made, what is the, what's the office park in Bellevue?
North Creek.
Mercer Slough. Mercer Slough would classify. So none of the city's streams have enough of a flow to meet the S definition. The only part where they become a shoreline and S is really at the confluence of where it, it meets the lake.
Yeah. So, and George Davis isn't going to meet that requirement even after the enhancements. So, so, so that leads to F. F is at 150. And, and did you do any studies that showed that 200 would create a legal challenge or a risk challenge that we would put homes in distress?
I mean, we did some high-level mapping exercises just to look at, you know, site potential tree height versus proposed buffers and talk through that with the city. So we did do some, you know, visual analysis as well as discussion.
And what was the result of that? That it was too encumbrance or...
I also want to highlight one other thing, in that the definition of type F has changed with this update as well. So far more stream reaches in the city will be classified as a type F following this update. Whereas previously, the city had, and also we want to be clear that the city treats the stream and the buffer the same, and we are following the recommendation for riparian management from WDFW because we actually regulate the buffer and protect the buffer just like a stream. The, the other thing is that previously, the type F was defined as only having fish presence. In order to be a type F, you had to show that there was fish presence in the stream. But now type F is defined under the proposed revised definition that's with this packet as having fish habitat or meeting the parameters of having fish habitat. So you don't necessarily have to have, there could be a barrier that a fish can't make it past. So say, for example, you had a culvert that was not fish-passable previously, and this fish would run up to the culvert and couldn't get any further, but on the other side of that culvert, you had miles of valuable stream that could provide fish habitat. Well, the, the, on the upside of the culvert was not being managed as a type F stream because of the barrier. However, on the downslope side, it was being managed as a type F stream. So with this change, the upslope side of the stream will also be managed as a type F. So what we're seeing here is a, actually a fairly large increase in the stream buffers across the city by simply changing that definition.
And do you have the same, thank you, David, because that's what, that was my understanding as well when I was reading it. And then on the, still to, I would say that I would like to see it be 200 feet, because I thought at one point, all of our fish-bearing streams were already 200-foot buffers. So, but, but I would take the 1, I would take the 150 with the fact that they're an improved riparian buffer. I think that we do run into some challenges. We want to actually use those riparian buffers as trail and connectivity. How about on NP and NS? What would be a disadvantage or an advantage to moving the, the buffers from 50 on NSs to 75, or taking the MPs from 75 to 100? So increasing by 25 feet, actually what it does is it just puts another tree, a full-grown tree is about 25 to 30-foot span of shade and protection, temperature for, for sure on climate change. So it just adds another tree, a full-grown 80-year-old to 100-year-old tree on that stream. What would, is there any reason why we wouldn't want to do that, or is there a reason why we shouldn't do it?
I think from a management perspective, in balancing different objectives as a city, it would tip it in to the side of constraining land versus balancing. Right now, I feel like we're right at the point of balancing where we have a comp plan that really looks at, you know, how we're going to build out over time. And with the comp plan, we're, we're trying to take some of the burden off of the, the R zones and, and put a future focus on the future subareas and neighborhood centers and try to, trying to way to redevelop existing asphalt, if you will. But at the same time, we also need to consider that many of our subdivisions here in the city were built under King County, which had much smaller setbacks and buffers from critical areas at that time. The housing stock is the housing stock. One of the county's policies, in the countywide planning policies, is to retain existing housing stock. So if we were to, to increase buffers, we start to get into that tension of, again, things being rendered non-conforming. We're already increasing buffers with the, the type F stream. We understand that to be part of the science that we really need to be doing this. We don't, we have, are not aware of the science related to specific, I mean, I'd say potential tree height tool, if you could apply it, sure. That, that sounds like a great approach. However, given that we are a, a largely suburban setting with some ex-urban and some urban as well, that we don't see that as something that's feasible in the city.
And I'll just challenge you on that just a little bit to just say that, you know, 10 years ago, the comp plan update at that time was, the main focus was to protect the environment. And so as you read through our comprehensive plan currently, you see that it's very much geared towards the environment. And what you see, what, what King County and PSRC and others have, have said is, hey, there's this perceived housing crisis. And so what we see now is a comp plan moving forward that is focused on housing. And, and so, again, at some point, the pendulum will swing again. And, and the sad thing for me is, as a council member, is when I look at the City of Samamish being an edge city and primarily residential with the wildlife that live here, including bear and bobcat, cougar, deer, all the birds and the fish and the amphibians, and even some of our otters and some of the other animals that live both on land and in the lake, those, they have an ability, they, they have a right, in my opinion, to be able to live here too. And so I just caution you on that, that, yeah, I get where the, where the council's headed. I get where the growth manage, or the comprehensive plan update is headed. But we're talking tonight about the criticals area, and they're critical to the well-being of every human being and everything that lives in the City of Samamish. So I do, I do want to thank you for the work that you guys have put forward. It is a huge lift. It's something I've been looking forward to for pretty much four years, five years that I've been on the council. My hope was that after this update, we would actually do wildlife corridors afterwards. It looks like I'm getting my wish, and they're going to be a part of this comp plan. So I do appreciate all the hard work of staff. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Just a couple of quick questions. One, you said that you believe that you've addressed most of Mary's feedback that she submitted. Is that in one of your sort of question-and-answer documents where we can see that that's all addressed or, and I apologize for not knowing that. There's a lot here.
Well, I, I'll pass it to Avril. Avril did spend a substantial amount of time meeting with Mary and walking through the various ways that we plan to make some improvements in how we administer this. There, of the things that she listed, a majority of those are really left to implementation and its administrative process. There are some that she highlighted, like the 1,000 versus 200 feet, that it, you know, depends who you are. We don't recommend changing that.
Can you speak to that one a little bit more? Because that was one of the ones that I jotted down.
Yeah, so the 200 feet is related to stormwater management. It's not related to ultimately how much development you could put on a property. The, the 1,000 feet comes from the last critical areas update where it, it fits under existing conditions. And what it does is it allows somebody to make an, an increase in the amount of development on their property if it's already been developed. So if you have existing impervious or you have an existing building, adding on to that. You know, one thing you could do is make that consistent with the commercial properties and make it say, or 10%, whichever is less. That would be consistent then with that.
Can, can I ask a clarifying question on that one? So, because I remember distinctly talking about the stormwater updates and on like the steep slopes, we made sure to reduce the amount of additional impervious surface without having to require a lot of additional drainage stuff, just because we didn't want to potentially create more opportunities for landslides, et cetera. So this 1,000 feet, is it still measuring the same thing? Like in the, in the stormwater update, it was the addition of, I think, 200 square feet would trigger additional stormwater review. So is this the addition of 1,000 feet of impervious surface?
It really is not related to stormwater. And that's the point I'm trying to make, is that she's talking about a 200-foot threshold for stormwater. We're talking about 1,000 feet. I also want to paint the picture that it's up to 1,000 feet, and the, the criteria and the bar is really high.
Okay.
Very seldom do we see anybody actually using this provision in the code. You have to actually have a, a well-documented, well-thought-out example of, you know, how you're achieving this, how there's no net, how you've avoided and minimized, how there's no net loss of ecological function, where mitigation is going in return for this. But what it does is it grants relief for somebody who say, you know, they, your home is what it is and you want to add on to your dining room. Well, you're not going to go and completely retool the entire floor plan of your house. Well, you're not going to go and completely retool the entire floor plan of your house. I mean, maybe you could if you had infinite funds, and move the kitchen and dining room to the other side of the house where there isn't a critical area buffer. Instead, you're going to look at ways to minimize the intrusion, take advantage of any areas that might be existing impervious or gravel outside or mowed lawn, and it would allow you to accommodate that in your changing needs. Say you're aging in place, and you're only able to use one floor of your home. Well, and you need to make some changes to that home. This provides some very constrained and limited flexibilities for you to be able to make changes to your home. That's what this is.
Okay. And the, the stormwater stuff would still get triggered if you?
200 feet, it would get triggered regardless of the 1,000 feet.
Excellent, okay. And then I really appreciate your comment about the quality of the buffers and not just the size, because I think that, that's really important, and I do appreciate that. We also got quite a bit of feedback in an email just before the meeting from Paul Stickney. And to be honest, I haven't had a chance to go through all of that. He did have one where, and I think it was similar to James's comment, talking about the sort of trying to merge when you have two areas into like one bigger area, if I understand that correctly, which I probably don't. So can you educate me on that? And, and what, like, I understand the goals, I think, but what kinds of challenges might that present from a, you know, taking of land? Or, or is it going to create other challenges where we don't necessarily need all of that?
Good question. So you're talking about habitat corridors and the requirements for that in the code, as I understand it. The, the proposed wetland buffer section utilizes one of the model ordinance options that the Washington State Department of Ecology has put forward, which is, which is great because it gives you clear concise language that, you know, is implementable. And regarding habitat corridors, the way the proposed code is structured for in the wetland section is that you have, you start with a larger buffer, which is graded, scaled based on your wetland classification and the habitat score. But then that can be a lesser buffer, a narrower buffer can be applied if, if the applicant demonstrates that they're applying minimization measures like routing toxic runoff away from the wetland, directing lights away. There's, there's a list of minimization measures that should be applied as applicable to a specific project. And then habitat corridors can be applied if, if available as determined by a qualified professional. So in order for the habitat corridors to serve the intended function, you need to be connecting one protected area to another protected area. You don't want to, so the code specifies that. It lays out, I think, four different criteria, such as, you know, adjacent to an area that's identified in a watershed plan for protection, a legally protected natural preserve, or an equivalent high-quality habitat that is protected from, from development, excuse me. So, so there's very clear criteria, and it's not going to apply in every case, and it does specify 100-foot width. So I, I think it's, it's laid out in a reasonable, balanced way that allows and encourages people to capitalize on those opportunities to maintain those corridors as development occurs.
It's a lot here.
Yes.
Yeah, so we, I also, you know, heard the comment this evening verbally delivered about creating some form of a sacrificial area in a certain part of town whereby you relax your critical areas rules. And, you know, the example could be, say, town center. If the council was to direct and the city manager was to support changing critical areas rules for town center, you could do that. I wouldn't advise it, but that is something that has been done, as he points out, in other cities. So rather than taking our time now to try and identify if we should have different rules in the town center, we could add that to, you know, that project if the city manager was supportive of that. So just wanted to point that out, that this might not be the right conversation for that.
Yeah, because I definitely want us to get the balance. I mean, from my, my personal opinion is that the way we get the best environmental outcomes is by striking the right balance, right? And we know that density of housing is going to ultimately lead to better environmental outcomes long-term, right? So as long as that's what we're encouraging, so we can protect areas, but still be able to get that housing, is going to be really important. So appreciate that.
These, all of these, you know, the comp plan, the implementing development regulations, the critical areas rules, these all lead to the land, land management practices. And ultimately, it shapes what happens out there in the community, what's built on the land.
Right.
And what we're trying to do is balance, it's, it's difficult trying to balance, you know, the delivery of housing, protection of environmental resources, providing for services and utilities and transportation and all of these things. It's really complex while also getting the development community to want to do it.
Right, yeah. Well, I appreciate you guys trying to strike that balance. I assume if we find that some of these are challenging, we can modify them, right? That's the nice part about our code. So if you're feeling like we have that right balance and that we are going to be able to still achieve the types of density of housing so that we can have better public transit, consolidation of infrastructure, reduced impervious surface, which ultimately will protect our critical areas even more, if you feel like that's the balance you've been going for and you think you've done the best we can, then I, I think I'm satisfied.
And we're also going to be talking a little bit more about things like impervious surface and lot coverages later this evening as part of the complement, comprehensive plan implementing development regulations.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, council. So I am going to close this hearing unless there are any objections on that. So I am closing this public hearing on the adoption of the ordinance for the critical areas regulations. And I don't know if we have any other further comments, but I would say, as of this moment, I do sponsor, or sponsor, I do, I do agree with option one, no amendments at this time. Because I know we have done a lot on this, and I really appreciate it. Does anyone else have anything on this before we move to the next thing? Thank you, everybody. And I don't know if, council, are you good with taking like a seven-minute break? If we could be back at like 8:34? That'd be awesome. Thank you. Okay, we are coming back. Yeah, we do have Coram. I think we have two people on the way back. Okay, so next up for, is this unfinished business? Yes, of course, because it's the budget. Vicki.
All right. For the record, Vicki Carlson, Finance Director. So tonight is a continuation of the department presentations. You're going to be hearing from the remaining departments. Those are not part of the CIP. The format is going to be the same. Each department will cover major work plan items, any service level reductions, and speak to any significant underspends in the current biennium. It's always a good reminder about the budget philosophy that was used to draft the budget, and a reminder that we do have a structural imbalance that we need to resolve. The recommendation is still for a utility tax and start working on an MPD, but later tonight, I am going to be reviewing other unrestricted revenue options, which you had asked me to bring back for you. And again, as you hear from departments, it's important to keep in mind the cost savings measures that have been applied to all departments. So just as a reminder, what-ifs and contingencies have been removed, office supplies have been reduced, out-of-state travel and training have been reduced, as well as significant reductions in meeting meal budgets. We've also reduced the total number of seasonals and limited overtime. And again, we're going to continue to find ways to reduce costs where we can. And now I'm going to turn over to Rachel to kick off the department discussions.
Good evening, councilmembers. For the record, Rachel Bianchi, Deputy City Manager. I am going to go over the city manager's budget as well as some other budgets, so I'm going to start with yours first. So I, I think you all know your major work plan item is this, right? Three times a month, so overseeing the city and making sure that things are moving along. So I, just as a reminder, these slides that Vicki and Mike Sugg put together, you have the summary and the detail page in the top corner, as well as the work plan pages. So next slide, please. Service level reductions that are found in your budget moving forward is, like everyone else, we've reduced travel and training. There are no, there is no funding for a what-if, right? We were, we originally had a conversation last year when we adopted the regional agenda that we were going to look at potentially doing a federal lobbyist and upping our federal game. We did not include money for federal lobbying in this budget. But we do want to make sure that you are aware that we are maintaining those associations that we are involved with, AWC, NLC, and SCA. Next slide. There is an underspend of approximately 14% in this current biennium. That really was due to the what-if budgeting that had been done previously. So that is the end of the city council. I was going to move to the city manager's office unless there's questions. So here we are in the city manager's department. Major work plan items. As you know, we have a number of sustainability initiatives moving forward. We are a part of Energy Smart Eastside and are working through the heat pump program. We continue to implement the Climate Action Plan. We will be coming to you in the next biennium to right-size the UFMP. For folks at home, that's the Urban Forestry Program. And then we are underway on the Right-of-Way Tree Study, which is really a key component of right-sizing that UFMP. We are also working through, on the, implementing the racial equity work plan after the council recently adopted the Racial Equity Commitment and Vision. We are required by a new state law to update our impact fees. As a part of that, we are also going to look at development fees and an indirect cost allocation model. We have some opportunities moving forward to make sure that the general fund is paying what the general fund needs to do and that the general fund is not supporting the stormwater fund. So that is a great opportunity for us to do that. We're also undertaking some service level reviews so that we have a better understanding throughout the city of how much it costs us to do different things and what it would look like to reduce costs, and then what that service level reduction would look like. I cannot stress, that is a large, large body of work that will sort of start with different departments and move forward over time. Next slide, please. So service level reductions, obviously, there's no funding for what-ifs, and that has been, you know, a useful thing in the city manager's office previously. We did reduce funding from this biennium to the next biennium for our racial equity work, but I will say, there's adequate funds remain in the department for us to do that work moving forward. Next slide. So that's the city manager's. Any questions about that?
Councilmember Stewart is first, sorry.
Sorry. I was wondering if you could, if there was, and if you don't have it tonight, if you could just share it with us, a little more detail when we say Climate Action Plan Implementation? Because I don't recall in the work plan, it was kind of just the one big item as well. So I'm, I'm just curious what, what that, what we budgeted for in that area.
So we have funding for the Green Sammamish Guide, or Sustainable Sammamish Guide. We'll continue to do that on a regular basis. The Climate Challenge, which the council requested that the city join, this was a little over a year ago, looking at our options to expand the green power program with the city so that we have fully green power, additional waste reduction programs, and then some additional professional services dollars as we are currently working with the Sustainability Commission for them to help prioritize what are those other cap, specific cap initiatives that we should be working on moving forward. So then the big part of that is the support for the Energy Eastside Heat Pump Program. So we have mentioned previously that we got a grant for about $120,000 for low-income heat pump installations, but we are also incentivizing middle-income heat pump installations as well as doing advertising and promotion for folks who can afford to go ahead and do a heat pump installation, so.
So is there any plan, thank you for that. That's a great list. But is there any plan for us to sort of complete an analysis like King County has done? They called it their wedge analysis, right? Where they say, hey, we know what our goals are, and here are the policies or the actions we need to take to try to get there. And even across King County, in doing that, a lot of their stuff, it's like, hey, if we do this, we think we'll reduce it this much, we still think we have a gap, so we know we have to do more. I feel like these are all great steps to take, but we have no idea if we do all these things, are we moving in the right direction? Is it going to move the needle to get us closer to the goals that we set out? And I feel like that's a really important part to really understand, like, do we have a plan? We might not be able to get there, but do we at least have a plan to get us to those goals, even if it's not on time? And I, I don't, I don't see the work there to get us to that plan.
I, I think that's a fair concern. I think we are, you know, as you know, and are very involved leveraging our work with K4C, with the county, for that sort of stuff as well, in terms of the, the strength in numbers, right?
So is there, because I feel like we have to take that and put it on a city basis, because I think that those policies are countywide, and a lot of those won't apply to us. So I think that's what we're going to need to try to do, right? Otherwise, we don't really know what.
So there's currently not funding in the biennium for that.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate that.
Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you. There's a line item for meeting meal expense with a footnote one. I like hate to be a Grinch, but I'm not sure why it went from 5,000 in the last biennium to 20,000 this year.
I'll have to look at that and get back to you. Do you have, we, so?
It's for the mayor and deputy mayor meeting. And it says that there's, well, that's what it says.
We get free lunch, okay?
Five to eight.
What page is that?
It's on page 343. It's like.
Yeah, every Monday.
The fourth line down.
A canvas.
Yeah.
Thanks to be mayor.
Yeah. I don't know what that includes, so just, that's why I'm asking the question.
Councilwoman Lamb, maybe we can get back to Councilmember Lamb on, with an answer to that question and to the rest of council, in the interest of time tonight, maybe continuing with questions, and we will provide a response.
I just had another question on what the election costs, what that includes. That the line item is for 367,000?
So that's the cost of, that King County charges us to run an election. So that would be both for a primary and a general. We assume that there would not be a special election. That cost would actually go up if there was.
Okay. And, and is every city charged the same amount?
It's by popular, by voter, voter registration. So Councilmember Lamb, I'm on page, on, we're meeting meals expense one, and I see it went from 7,000, and we reduced it to 3,000.
Oh.
Control up, go to the next one.
I see 5,000 going up to 20.
Oh, you're on the city manager. Okay. Yep, we will look at that and get back to you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Scott. Yeah. Okay, does anyone else have a question about the city manager? Not about him, but about the budget. Okay, okay, please continue.
Okay, human services. I want to make it really clear, we are not only holding human services harmless in this budget, so they are getting the same amount of funding for the grants that have gone out. And you had that great presentation by the commission at the last meeting. We did actually increase funding by 50,000 for the biennium for our senior services provider, so that they could better recoup the costs that they pay for providing us that service, so. Next slide, please. Legal services is ongoing legal services. Legal services is ongoing legal services. So, no major highlights from that and no significant underspend in this biennium. Next slide. So, this is going to look a little different than previous. We have created a public safety department where we restructured things and we, that's where we put the contract for police, for fire. It used to be that the police contract, the jail contract was under the police services, which is a little odd, because we'll talk about what police services are. So, this way, all those contracted services are in one place. We have, we're going to talk tonight about what's in the existing budget, right? But we all know with EFOR adopting their budget last week that there are going to be some changes. And we'll talk a little bit about process moving forward, both the council amendments and then we as staff will be bringing forth one major amendment, and that will include reducing the cost of fire, because fire is now, they're coming in at 15.2% for 2025 and 8.4% for 2026. Now, that is offset a little bit by the fact that the budget before you has police with a 7% increase and now that that increase has been solidified at 7.9. So, that will go up a little bit. So, those changes will come in that, that amendment one, that staff will be putting before you on the fifth-ish. The other thing I will just say about this is we tried as much as we could to right-size the other public safety contracts. So, for instance, the jail contract, right, prosecution contract, again, a real focus and a lot of work to try to get things back towards budgeted and actuals, so. There are, there is, next slide, there is an underspend, oh, major, so police services, this is where, again, we're going to have a little bit as we trans, as we move from having the police services to we're going to have two now, which includes the public safety department. But major efforts for the coming biennium are the community police academy and the police explorers. And then the next slide covers the, there is a 10% underspend for this biennium. You all know that the contract is often underspent due to staffing vacancies and then also, again, part of our effort to make sure that we're better budgeting, the jail numbers were below That is public safety and Rachel, unless there are any other questions.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just one quick question, because I know we currently have like the police explorer program and I don't remember what the other one was on there. Are those kind of staying the same? Are they going up since they were highlighted as major work plan items? Like, is it something new or is it just maintaining what we already have?
It's maintaining existing levels of service.
Perfect, okay, thanks.
All right, I'm not seeing any other questions on that. Thank you.
Great, good evening. David Pile, Department of Community Development. The community development department's major work plan items are fairly straightforward and ones that we've talked about with the council. So, in addition to all the work that the department does for permitting and ongoing development activity and monitoring all that, we do have some major items coming up in '25 and '26. The first of those is the Town Center Plan and Code Amendment Project that you're all familiar with, that we talked about at the last council meeting and that we will continue to work on through the winter into the spring and into the summer next year. That will ultimately wrap up with a supplemental environmental impact statement and the council will be presented with options to potentially amend the Town Center Plan and Code. In addition to that, we're looking at a neighborhood centers plan, and this could really come in multiple forms. The first step we're going to plan to take with this is where we'll assess and do a lot of community outreach to better understand what different parts of the city might fit different types of neighborhood centers and hopefully get a lot of feedback from the community members in those neighborhoods and get a better understanding of what amenities or things they want to see. That could also result in private proposals, say, for example, Eastlake Development LLC could come in and propose a neighborhood center on the James Eastman property, in which case we would then continue working with him through what is known as a subarea process to develop a neighborhood centers plan. The Centers in Corridors Plan is really centered around, sorry, centered around the Inglewood to Pine Lake corridor down 228th and looking at the relationship between the Inglewood and Pine Lake areas in addition to Town Center and all of the relationships along 228th between. This could then result in setting the stage for subarea planning at either Inglewood or Pine Lake or both in the years to come. But before we launch that effort, we really want to understand the relationships between the Inglewood area, the Town Center, and the Pine Lake area and what opportunities, strengths and weaknesses might exist. So, basically doing a SWOT analysis, a bunch of community outreach, working with property owners, et cetera. The next one is one we've talked about a lot and one that could be fun but could also be a bit challenging. It's our tree regulations update. One of the challenges with this is right-sizing the tree rules, is getting the right trees in the right places, understanding how we are handling things like disease and blight and some of the impacts our trees are seeing from climate change and how we take, take that into account as a management practice going forward. This is also going to be affected by the work that the state is doing in implementing the Wildland Urban Interface Codes. The State Department of Natural Resources is working on a map, and once that map is published, there'll be some changes to the building codes. So, this one on a time scale might be really restricted by when those codes are available, because what we don't want to do is update the tree rules and then open them up again the next year and redo them, because now we have Wildland Urban Interface Codes to account for. I know we want to get after the, we want to get this process started, however, we do need to be mindful of that work that the state is doing and potential code updates that could result from that. Finally, the permit system replacement is something that the department is working on with IT. Many of our staff are looking forward to the day we replace Tracket. However, it is quite a feat to figure out what exactly the parameters are that we need in a permit software and, and ultimately who to get that from and whether or not that agent, that organization or that, that private business will be able to maintain it properly for us over time. So, thank you if you have any questions. Those are the primary work items for '25 and '26 for community development.
Okay, I'm not seeing any questions for that. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mark Barrett, Admin Services Director. And just as a reminder, Admin Services has Human Resources, Emergency Management, the Grants and Contracts Unit, and some risk management as well. For the work plan items, we have three new ones that are, that are up, all pertaining to emergency management. The first is Phase Two of the Emergency Sheltering Planning that we'll be doing some work on. The second, similar, is, is the second phase of the Emergency Management Program Assessment. This is where we take the recommendations, identification of things that we need to do and put them into action. And then the third, which, which really relates to both of the previous two, is about going through our supplies and stocks and taking a good inventory of it, getting some of the things that we know that we need to get, replacing some things that we have that have aged out, so that we have both the planning and the supplies in order to take care of emergency management. Also, in addition to these, we have a couple of large projects that while they will be completed in this year are going to carry over and create a significant amount of work for us in 2025. The first of those through Human Resources is revamping and implementing a new performance review system and having that done through an electronic means. HR will be working with all of the supervisors and managers over the course of the upcoming year as they need to do performance reviews to not only train them, but also to do some quality control efforts. And then we are finishing our implementation of contracting software in the Grants and Contracts Unit, and while it will be implemented by the end of the year, we will continue to be working and supporting all of the departments that go through the bid process and the contracting process, as well as the fact that it will be a new piece of software for the Grants and Contracts Unit as well, so. Next slide, please. Like some other departments, Admin Services has an underspend in this year and, and much like some of the other departments, that's basically due to the what-if budgeting that took place for those, for those things that could have occurred that, as it turned out, they didn't occur. Additionally, as we put together the budget, we were coming off a period of time where we were doing a significant of, a large amount of hiring and the costs in advertising and recruiting and processing that went with that, and we're no longer in one of those stages. In emergency management, really, the underspend here is more about timing than it is about an underspend. I anticipate that those will end up being spent, but it's a matter of when the invoices came in and when the, when the monies became available for us to spend them. And so, for instance, the sheltering work was done through the fiscal year 2023 Emergency Management Performance Grant, which is really a process of monies passing down through the state to cities via a formula for approved work. The 2023 and 2024 all have matching funds, and while we have been able to expend the grant component of it, it's the match that we, that is part of this underspend that then we will carry over and spend into 2025. And the 2024 EMPG is really just coming on now. We just got notified that we will be receiving the acceptance letter, and they typically come in late October, and so that pushes some of that work into the next year. Next slide, please. On the risk management side, there are a couple of work plan items. The first is to really obtain adequate insurance at the most reasonable cost, and this has us primarily taking a look at the balance between our deductibles and the rates that we pay. We think in taking a look at both fleet and property, but primarily property, we may be able to strike a better balance that will have some savings for the city and that work is going to be done going forward. It is also to continue the work on our safety programs in order to minimize the risk for employees and to keep them safe at work and also to keep the city out of risk. This is primarily done particularly for, for staff through our safety policy and through our safety committee and the work that they do. And I believe that that's it, if there are any questions.
Okay, I'm not seeing any questions for that section. Thank you.
Okay, so my department is next, but before I go into my department, I do want to respond to the question about the meeting meals in the city manager's office, because we have an answer to that one. In the current biennium, the budget is $42,000. In the upcoming biennium, it's been reduced to $20,000, and that's for employee appreciation. It's the summer barbecue.
So, just for further edification, there were two GLs, so there were two lines in the city manager's office for this biennium. One had the $5,000 that you were looking at, the difference. The other one was further down in the budget and it was for 30, it was revised down to $37,000 as a part of the mid-buy. So, what we did was just combine the two. It's for both the staff barbecue, the breakfast that the staff does, and then it's for any restricted meals that we have. So, if the council were to have, let's say, a joint meeting with someone and we wanted to have a dinner or something provided, so that's what that is.
Okay, it just wasn't clear with the footnote. It didn't include that, thanks.
That's a great catch, and we'll make that footnote more clear.
Okay, so for the finance department, so much of our work is deadline-driven, and we will continue to do all of our regular processes, but for the next year, so we're going to be focusing on process improvements. Many of our current processes have been in place for a number of years and we need to modernize them and create some efficiencies. So, it's also include modernizing our accounting practices. We're also gearing up to work on revenues. If council approves, the budget ordinance is drafted, we will immediately pivot to start working on the utility tax and starting to look at that, what structure for an MPD would look like. And finally, we need to either significantly upgrade our existing ERP system or replace it with something more modern so we can create some of these efficiencies. RFPs on the street now and we hope to make a selection before the end of this year. And we do have some underspend, the current biennium. Most of it is due to staff vacancies. We are a department of seven, and at one point, we had three staff vacancies, including my position, and we did have one line that had been over-budgeted, had those what-ifs in there, and that was the merchants' fees, and that has been addressed for the current And there are three more departments, just to call attention to them. We have a non-departmental, that is the transfers out to other funds. We've talked a lot about that through the CIP process. There's also two other sections in the budget documents I just want to call your attention to. They are included for reference and historical purposes, but there's no budget in the upcoming biennium. That's the ARPA Fund and the Debt Service Fund. Both of those have been fully paid off and spent down, either the prior biennium or the And so, the next steps, you've now had an opportunity to see the full budget through several presentations, and you have the detailed draft GFOA budget and CIP documents. If you have proposed budget amendments, we're asking that you send them to us, Scott, Rachel, and myself by October 25th, so we can make sure we understand the proposal and how it could possibly be implemented. As I've mentioned previously, the current draft budget is using $7.2 million of existing fund balance for ongoing services. It's not a best practice to add expenditures to the budget without identifying what the offsetting reduction would be, and I would strongly suggest that any reductions that are part of the proposal go to reducing the deficit rather than to new projects, so even to one-time project costs. So, for example, we're reducing the level of service for snow and ice removal, that budget reduction really should, my recommendation is to bid it against lowering the deficit in the next biennium. The chart on this page is just a reminder that if we do nothing, we are completely out of fund balance in 2029, and that's using the reserve requirements. Even making the adjustments for EFOR and the couple other amendments that are coming is, is not going to move this needle very much. And this chart, you've seen this before and you're going to see it again in my next presentation, this is just a reminder that the utility tax alone is not enough for financial sustainability. It does move the needle, but more is needed to continue providing the same level of service. And here's where we are on the schedule. So, November 5th, we'll start the public hearings and council deliberations where we will work through any of the proposed amendments that you have, and we're still shooting for adoption for the budget on November 19th. And before I move into the presentation on different revenue options, I'll pause and see if you have any questions on this topic.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Lamb.
So, we have quite a few comments on the intern for parks, and this is from Smamish Stewart's, I believe. I believe the line item was for $43,000. Is that for one intern or multiple interns? And I'm just trying to figure out, like, is, if we bring it down to 20, like, we could look for a way to pay for that.
So, is this a possible amendment coming forward?
Well, no, I just wanted to clarify, is that line item, $43,000, is that for one intern or multiple interns?
Not sure which line item you're referring to.
That is in the parks?
We'll have to get back to you on that, Councilmember Lamb, and we'll put, make sure we put it in the updated Q and A.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, will we be able to get these presentations? Because we don't have these in our packet, and I would love to be able to have like the, the graph, because like the two graphs you showed, one of them, the bar graph, and I wasn't able to catch the years to see if they were the same years, because the line graph didn't have as, it didn't have a $23.8 million difference, but the bar graph showed a $23.8 million deficit, so.
We can send those out.
What's that?
We can send those out.
Yeah, that would be great, so that we can understand what, what the numbers are that we're really looking at. And I guess my other question is, we have a financial model, are we going to be able to get, like, the current budget proposal put into that financial model so that we can see what happens based on what the current proposed budget does?
So, that is included in the draft budget document. I don't have the document in front of me, so I can't tell you what page that's in, but we've actually included that. I want to say it's in the last half of the document.
So, we won't be able to get, like, the model with the numbers in it, so we can play with it?
We weren't planning to send that out.
Okay. Because then we won't know what happens with any of our proposed amendments. We wouldn't be able to see what that does, so.
I'm hope, I'm planning to model that. That's why we're asking for those amendments by the 25th, so we can work through what that looks like.
I just want to add for anybody watching from home, all of the presentations and budget information is also on our website, so it's accessible there as well. Yes? Yep. Thank you to Mike Suck. Thank you to Mike Suck. It will be.
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, thank you for the presentations. I just wanted to clarify, the updated budget with the new fire and police numbers, you said we'd be getting those on October, or sorry, on November 5th?
Yeah, I plan to put together kind of what I'm referring to as Budget Amendment 1, which will include all of the adjustments that we know of today. So the adjustments to the fire budget, the adjustments to the police department budget, the contract for services, the change in level of service for snow and ice, and a couple of others. So that'll be Amendment 1. Excuse me, we'll show you what that looks like, and then we can start working on the amendments that there's consensus from council to include.
Is there any way we could get those, some rough version of that sent to us before the 25th, so that we can, that can help inform our amendment choices, or like our feedback for amendments?
I'm working on doing those updates now. I'll get them done as quickly as possible, but I can't guarantee how quickly I can get them out to you.
Thank you.
All right, council, any other questions on the department presentations?
Okay.
If I may really quickly, I just want to follow up on Councilmember Gupta's question, and I appreciate the question. I think one of the pieces that I would want to be clear with council about is that the Amendment 1 version you all will have to take action on as part of the final budget adoption. So what you're seeing in the GFOA budget now is, I would encourage you to, unless you're planning on doing a multimillion-dollar proposed amendment, that it probably won't matter which, whether or not the Amendment 1 is rolled into whatever you might propose. So I just want to encourage you to not be restricted by that. We're happy to work with you one-on-one, and Rachel and Vicki are ready and able to help you figure out what proposed cut you would want to make in concert with any proposed add you want to make, and so that's why I say I don't think it's predicated on Amendment 1. I think we'll try to get out the total numbers in terms of how much does it reduce the budget gap, but it won't change that if you want to make specific amendments. It won't change that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, without any further delay, I'm going to be walking through some unrestricted revenue options that are available to cities that we don't currently utilize, and also about the MPD, which, since it was recommended by the task force, so covering the utility tax, MPD, and the other unrestricted revenue sources that are available to cities. I'm going to give you an overview of each option, including how it can be enacted, an estimate of how much revenue we think it could generate, the workload to implement the tax, and I'll show you what the impact to the general fund looks like with each one of those options. One thing to keep in mind, as I go through these slides, most of the revenue options have a graph showing the impact to the general fund. The graphs are based on the budget that was presented to you two weeks, not including the amendments that are going to be coming, you know, with the change in EFA budget, et cetera. But before I jump into the, oh, thank you. It's been a long day. But before I jump into the revenue options, I want to take just a couple of minutes to remind you all why we're having this discussion. We do have a structural imbalance. Ongoing revenues are not growing at the same rate as our expenditures. The budget that was presented to you two weeks ago meets the council goals of providing the same level of service and protecting staff, which is all the full-time staff are fully budgeted. However, in order to meet these goals, we are using existing fund balance to pay for these ongoing costs. It's not sustainable. I would consider the next biennium to be a bridge biennium, and, which gives us time to implement the new revenue sources and would give us the utility tax beginning of January 2026, and start working on the second revenue source, that would be a voter-approved measure, and that would be the MPD. It really does need to be both, not just one. If we do nothing, we are out of money and the reserve requirement as well by the end of 2029. Voter-approved measures are never a guarantee, so we really do need to start working on that one right away and not delay the work just because the utility tax is implemented.
Hey, Vicki, would you mind sliding over just a little bit, so we can't see you behind the other screen, so if you wouldn't mind just a scoosh?
My comfort zone. Okay, so I'm going to start in on the utility tax. It's a viable option for us, and it was strongly recommended by the task force. So cities do have the ability to implement a 6% utility tax on electric, gas, steam, and phone without a vote of the people. Anything above 6% would require voter approval. There's no cap on the rate for water, sewer, solid waste, or stormwater. Theoretically, we could levy something higher than 6% without a vote of the people on those particular utilities. We don't know necessarily exactly how much revenue this would generate, but until it's implemented, but the estimate is that it would be about $11 million annually, if that's based on a 6% across all utilities. It will take quite a bit of effort to implement the revenue source, as we not only have to draft the legislation, but we have to identify the utilities. And again, it's not so much the water sewer, it's the telecom, because there's a lot of different utilities, companies out there that provide the telephone cards. Those all have to be notified, and we have to identify them first. We also have to give the utilities plenty of time to implement the tax on their end. We'll need to figure out what the process for the utilities to file their returns and process the receipts when they come in. And also, as we're drafting the legislation, it's going to come back to you for approval as well. So just because the ordinance has the language to start working to implement that, there's still another step that council has to take, and that would happen next year. One final note on the utility tax is it is implemented by a lot of cities in Washington State. Currently, 189 cities in the state have imposed the utility tax, and I think it's out of 231, 261, 281 cities. So the majority have utility tax in place. So you've seen this slide before. This is what it would look like if utility tax came into effect on January 1st, 2026. This bottom line down here, this is our current ongoing revenue sources. That's the property tax, sales tax, user fees, et cetera. The blue line here, this is our ongoing expenditures, and this purple line represents what our ongoing revenues would look like with a utility tax starting in 2026. You'll see the first couple of years, the ongoing revenues would exceed ongoing expenditures, but only for the first couple of years. Then we flip upside down again, which illustrates why we need two options, not just the one. And best practice would dictate, because the utility tax alone does not solve the fiscal imbalance, that this gap for those two years, that money would be put towards one-time costs, not towards ongoing costs, or burning down the deficit that we have in the current budget. So in addition to a utility tax, we can also implement a brokered natural gas use tax. It's an equivalent use tax on natural gas sales that isn't subject to the utility tax. It's a use tax. It's in response to the deregulation for the industry that allows the larger customers to bypass gas utilities and bargain directly with the independent brokers. The use tax rate needs to be the same as a utility tax rate, excuse me. And you do have to have the utility tax in place in order to do the what, the gas use tax. It's easy to implement, because it just requires us to contract with the state. It would be minimal revenue, but it would create equality so that all natural gas would be taxed at the same rate, because it's a small amount of running, probably less than $100,000, if that much. I haven't modeled it, because it doesn't move the needle at all. So the next one I want to talk briefly about is the Metropolitan Park District, because that was the other option that was highly, strongly supported by the task force. So it does require voter approval with a simple majority to pass. Per state law, park districts can levy up to 75 cents per thousand of assessed value. So an MPD is not an unlimited revenue source. For parks, there is a cap. What the actual levy rate would be proposed would be determined over the next year or two, as we do all of that research, what goes into the MPD, what stays part of the city, if anything. There's a couple of options for governance. One option is that the city council would be the Board of Commissioners. Under this option, you would have your city council meeting, gavel it closed, and then conduct the MPD meeting as a commissioner. The other option is to have a separately-elected Board of Commissioners. There's a lot of work that goes into pulling together a solid plan to present to the voters, and it would take at least two years to do all of this work, plus polling, to even get to the ballot measure, and then there's no guarantee that it's going to pass the first time out. That's why we really need to start working on this as soon as possible. Given the number of decision points needed, I don't have a graph for this one either, showing the impact to the general fund. There's just too many variables that need to be taken into consideration. All that information would be presented to council as we work through this over the next couple of years. So admission tax is up next. So we do have the ability to levy an admission tax, up to 5% on admission charges for various events and facilities. Voter approval is not required to implement the tax, but given the estimated revenue that we think it would generate, we don't recommend this one. From what we've been able to do the research on, an admission tax would generate between $200,000 and $400,000 annually. It would be fairly easy to implement, because there's not many businesses that would qualify. Essentially, we've identified one at this point, but if it's challenged, there would be time and costs involved to defend it. And this is what it would look like if an admission tax was implemented. Again, same layout as the previous slides. The green line at the bottom is our ongoing revenue sources, and you can see adding in the admission tax barely moves the needle on this one. So the next one on the list is a business and occupation tax, or BNO tax. So this is a tax on a business, and it's measured by the value of the products or the gross income from the business activity, or the BNO tax can be applied to the square footage of the physical space for the businesses that the business occupies. BNO taxes are structured a bit differently in that there's four classes. So there's manufacturing, retail, services, and wholesale. Each class can have a different tax rate, but each business within the class has to have the same tax rate. Does not require voter approval to implement unless the retail class tax rate is going to be above 2/10ths of a percent. With all that said, there is a lot that goes into setting up and managing this tax. It's definitely a more complex tax and requires additional staff for implementation and ongoing management. I did implement this tax in my last city. It took effect January 1st of this year. It was considerable work to implement. We had to hire two additional staff just to do the implementation and maintain it, and it's a bare-bones program, not much for two people. It's also difficult to calculate how much revenue this would generate, because businesses don't generally disclose their gross income. We don't know what deductions would apply to that either, even if we could back into the gross income. However, looking at the business license data, which I reviewed, as well as our sales tax data, we estimate that a BNO tax might generate up to $1 million. And this is what a BNO tax would look like if this would add it. Again, barely moves the needle on the ongoing revenue piece. So excess levies are another option for us. You can do a one-year excess levy for maintenance and operation costs. However, it is voter-approved, and it requires a supermajority, so 60%, and it has to be renewed every year. And it does cost the city every time we're on the ballot, as you saw through the presentation earlier tonight. Additionally, in the ballot language, we have to state the purpose for the ballot measure, which means ongoing tracking to prove that the funds were spent correctly on what we identified that they would be spent on. But to give you some context of what this would look like for an average taxpayer, every penny of an excess levy would generate about $318,000. So if we wanted to generate $11 million via an excess levy, again, benchmarking against the utility tax, we would need to ask voters to approve an excess levy of 35 cents every year. You can do the math to figure out what your own property would be, but at 35 cents, you take your assessed value, divide by 1,000, times 35 cents, and just for context here, if your property has an estimated value of 1.7 million, which, when I looked, that was about the average homeowner value for Sammish, that taxpayer would pay an additional $595,000 for property taxes for an excess levy. 595. Oh, yeah, $595, not $595,000. Sorry about that. It's been a long day. Okay, so now that we've all had our heart attack there, next option is a public safety sales tax. So cities can levy up to 1/10th of 1% sales tax for public safety. That's as long as the county has not implemented this tax themselves. King County has not. It does require voter approval, but it's only a simple majority pass, but it can only go on a primary or general election. No special elections for this one. And interestingly enough, as I was doing this research, vehicle sales are exempt from this tax, as well as the first 36 months of a vehicle lease, so they don't get caught up in this particular tax. There are some restrictions on how you can use the funds, so at least a third must be used solely for criminal justice or fire protection. The rest is unrestricted. But here's an interesting wrinkle. We get to keep 85% of the tax. 15% goes straight to King County. So based on our current sales tax revenue, we estimate that we could generate up to an additional $900,000 in new revenue, and that's taking into consideration the 15% that would go to the county, and so this is what that would look like, very similar to a BNO tax. Okay, so the last option that I'm going to talk about is a levy lid lift. I saved the best one for last. So you may recall that property tax revenue is restricted to a 1% increase each year, plus new construction, and a lid lift allows us, with voter approval, to exceed that 1% increase. So there's two kinds of lid lifts with two options for each. They can be a single-year lid lift or a multi-year lid lift, and each type of lid lift can either be temporary or permanent. So a single-year lid lift is unrestricted, but a multi-year lid lift, you have to state in the ballot measure what the funds are going to be used for. A single-year lid lift can be in any election, including special elections. Multi-year can only be run during a primary or general election. Similar to an excess levy, every penny above the 1% lid would generate $318,000 in additional revenue. A big difference between excess levy and a levy lid lift is that the levy lid lift, you can only ask voters to go up to our statutory maximum. So with an excess levy, we could ask voters to exceed that if we wanted to. So if you're interested, our maximum statutory limit is $3.60 less whatever King County Library is levying. So right now, it's about 25%. So the maximum we could ask voters to lift the lid would be to $3.35. Regardless of what the law allows, we would need to understand what voters would support, because they're not going to just say yes to anything we ask for. So there's a lot of work to go into understanding what voters would support. And then to complicate things even more with levy lid lifts is this chart is showing you what a permanent levy lid lift would look like. So this is for a single-year lid lift. You'll note a bump in year three, and then every year after that, we're restricted to the 1% increase after that. As opposed to a temporary lid lift, so again, in year three, you get the 1% bump. This one's temporary for five years, so for five years, you get the extra revenue plus the 1%. Then when the lid lift expires, you go back to the 1% as if the levy lid lift had never occurred. So a lot of decision points in what type of a levy lid lift we would even want to explore. And one thing I do want to note is that 1% increase equals about $300,000 for us. So when I said a few meetings ago, where property tax is our main revenue source, I think it's 63% of the next biennial budget, that 1% increase generates about $300,000. It's very, very minor. So lid lifts, you get the one-time bump, but then we're back to that 1% restriction. And so again, you've seen this slide multiple times. This is just a reminder that if we want to hold staff harmless and continue the same level of service, a new revenue source really is necessary, and again, it's two measures, one council-matic, one voter-approved. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions you may have on the exciting topic of other revenue options.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, so one of the things I didn't see was a public safety levy. Is that the same as, I don't think that's the same as a levy lid lift. It's a separate thing, isn't it?
It's the same thing. The levy lid lift, you would just determine what those funds would be spent for. So you could do a levy lid lift for public safety. You could do a levy lid lift for parks. You could do a levy lid lift for really anything. So it's just about what is the package that you're putting forward, and what are you telling the voters that it's funding?
So the difference between, like, a Metropolitan Parks District versus a levy lid lift is that the Metropolitan Parks District needs a governing body, but it also, did you say it only needed a simple majority?
Simple majority pass. And then once it's in place, it's in place forever.
Okay. And then the public safety levy could be temporary or permanent. It could be up to It could be up to six years, right? One to six years, or it could be a permanent one?
Correct. But again, it's the 1% restriction.
Well, but the lid lift isn't 1%. The lid lift could be more than that.
It's a one-time bump.
Right.
Yeah. If I go back to... Let me get my mouse over here. If I go back to this, even if it's permanent, it's a one-time bump. So, you get that one-time shot in the arm of additional revenue, and then you're locked in at that 1% increase growth.
Okay.
I think the other thing to think about with the Metropolitan Parks District is, once the voters approve a Metropolitan Parks District, it's an automatic .75, right? So, per thousand to levy. So, oftentimes...
Up to, right?
Up to, right? Up to. But it's automatic. You don't have to go back to the voters if there were to be a raise in that levy up to the .75. So, what happens with MPDs, they have more of that elasticity over time because you start out with a lower rate, and then you have the ability to actually keep up with your expenses. Because the reality of the chart in front of you right now is, the levy lid lift doesn't allow you to keep up with year-over-year expenses because of the 1% restriction.
So, here's my other question, though, is that... I can't remember what chart it was, but somewhere you talked about the revenue we would potentially be able to get from a Metropolitan Parks District and the revenue from the utility tax, and it did not add up to cover the deficit plus getting us back above our mid-balance requirement.
So, what I showed you was what just the utility tax would look like, and in fact, let me go back to that slide.
No, it wasn't tonight. It was a different graph that we saw.
Because I don't think I've modeled what an MPD would look like because there's so many decision points that have to go into that one.
So, I guess then the question is, so before we make a decision, would an MPD and a utility tax solve our problem, or will we still need a third lever to pull?
And that's part of what I would be modeling next year, is we work through what an MPD would look like. Again, there's a lot of decision points that go into the MPD. What costs would transfer to the MPD? What costs would repay in part of the city? So, for example, parks could move, recreation could move, the capital piece associated with parks could move. We need to figure out all of that first and determine what then is removed from the city budget. Then we can model that to show what that looks like.
So, how do we make a decision without having some of those models to know what that's going to look like?
So, we've modeled the utility tax, and that is the starting point because that's the one we can implement the fastest. We can get that implemented by January 1st of 2026. That buys us time, then, to do solid research and a solid plan for the Metropolitan Park District.
And then, the utility tax increase would go into effect at the same time that the 17% increase from PSE would go into effect. Right? Actually, it's a 20% increase by 2020, or 2026, I mean. So, we already have, right? There's a 17%, and then like another whatever percent on top of that. So, by 2026, gas and electric is going to cost 20% more than it does today.
Utilities get an annual increase, and whenever we would enact...
And then our 6% would be on top of the increased amount, correct?
Correct.
And when you say telephone, that doesn't apply to cell phones, right? They're exempt?
Cell phones are taxed differently than telecom.
Right. So, they don't get the utility tax, correct? I thought I saw that listed somewhere as...
Yeah.
So, the telephones would only be people with landlines.
Landlines and telephone cards.
So, the... As I understand it, folks who have landlines and telephone cards are usually those with lesser means.
I believe cell phones are subject to the 6% utility tax.
They are? Okay.
Yeah, I think what's not taxable is internet.
And you talked about how if we implemented like a levy lid lift to generate the 11 million, it would be $595 per household, but isn't that what the utility tax is going to be on average?
Not necessarily.
If we generate $11 million?
Yeah, not necessarily on a home because people have different conservation, different usage of utilities.
Right, but on average, it's going to have to be $595 per household to equal 11 million.
Yeah, and that's per, if your assessed value is 1.7 million. So, if your assessed value is higher on an excess levy, you're going to pay more. If it's less, you're going to pay less. If it's lower assessed value, you're going to pay less than that.
Right.
So, really, you don't get to control how much you're charged with an excess levy or a levy lid lift because it's all based on your assessed value, where you do have a little bit more control with the utility tax. You can choose to use less utilities, use less of those services to change the cost that you're having to pay. So, you have a little bit more control in that than you do with a property tax.
It's still the most regressive tax. The utility tax is still the most regressive tax. And it's still going to be roughly between $500 and $600 per household if we're trying to generate $11 million, right? Because we have somewhere around 22,000 households.
Well, I would suggest that the smaller household would have a much less impact than the larger household would have, just if you take natural gas alone, right? Just the sheer square footage.
Understood. I'm just taking an average, right? We're still talking average $500 to $600 per household. Okay.
And I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted to share the MRSC revenue guide that they put out every year for cities is, we are very limited, unfortunately, about what we can do.
I just want to be clear that like the utility tax and the assessed property value tax is going to be proportionately different for a smaller or larger house, the same, pretty much. And I appreciate that like you have some control over using less utilities, but I wouldn't want to suggest that people not heat their home in the winter to save money. Right?
So, I'm interested in the admissions tax, and I think the concern was that it could be legally challenged. And I read the MRSC description, and I wasn't clear, and I'm hoping that Carrie could enlighten me.
Councilmember Lamb, I'm happy to answer any questions. I just can't really do it on the spot because I also haven't read that MRSC article that you're referring to. So, if you want to send me your question in an email, then I can be sure to share out the answer with the entire council.
Okay.
Thank you. That'd be great.
All right. So, with the... I don't know if you can... You said it was one business? Is it one business, or is it an industry? I don't know if you can...
It's one business that we've been able to identify.
Okay.
And that's where it could be potentially legally challenged because it could seem like a target with one business.
Okay. So, that's the concern?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I do think that even though it isn't expected to raise much revenue, I don't know the type of business, but it is a... I just don't know enough, like maybe, I don't know if that's like a conversation not on the dais, but I'd like to know what the business is. Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
Well, I think Councilmember Stewart just, you know, expressed her discomfort with trying to do anything that would put a burden on our residents, and I'm quite sure that everyone on the council shares that. However, I am in favor of doing what we need to do to close our budget gap because it's only going to widen and get worse. So, what are you looking for from us tonight that would be helpful?
So, what would be helpful is, we do have the budget ordinance to adopt the budget drafted to include language to move forward with a utility tax and start working on a Metropolitan Park District. It would be nice to have head nods that that is the direction that we want to go. Obviously, and I want to be really clear about this, even if you give us direction through this budget amendment to start on a utility tax, we still have to come back with the legislation for you to adopt. So, it doesn't... There's still a lot more work that has to be done, but the sooner we can get started on this, the better.
Thank you.
And maybe you can give us a timeline of when you'll be meeting with the water districts as well?
As soon as we have a head nod from you all that this is the direction we're going to be going.
Okay.
And honestly, once you adopt the budget ordinance, if it's adopted on November 19th, that gives us clear direction to move forward.
So, I'm giving a head nod yes on both of these because I really don't see another option, so I am giving a head nod. I don't know who else is, so... Yeah, I'm going to let a couple other people go first because I think Councilmember Stewart also has her... Councilmember Gupta?
Thank you. Would it be possible to get, just as we go forward, because I know it's a big lift to take anything to voters, just to get some more information on what a levy lid lift for public safety would look like? And, you know, I kind of expressed this at our last meeting, but just because the numbers are so large for the police and fire contracts, if... And the expectation is those are going to continue to rise at like between 6% to 8%, right? So, if we get that implemented, understanding that, you know, the term is going to be six years, and then we'd have to go back to voters potentially to increase that so we're not subject to just the 1%. I'd like to get some more information because we have so little information on the MPD and what that means. I'd like to have just a little bit more of, hey, this is what it would look like if we thought about a public safety levy. And it may, I think I expressed this last week as well, it may be that it doesn't work, and it, you know, it's not going to fill the gap, or it is too heavy of a lift, or whatever it is. But I'd like to get, just because we're at such a high level, I'd like to take a high level look at that as well.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, is there any way to get information on sort of what's going to be more or less regressive? So, just to be clear, I understand we have to solve our budget gap, and it's not that I'm unwilling to do so. I just want to make sure that we are exploring the least regressive ways to do that. So, is there a way to get data on what's more regressive, a utility tax or taxes that are based on assessed value?
Councilmember Stewart, I'm going to be honest, I'm not sure that there is any such... I think that's a matter of perception for the most part. I think you all have to decide for yourselves what is more regressive, property tax or a use tax. Those are different types of taxes, but I think that's part of the, you know, the overall calculation that you all have to decide for yourselves. I think what we are suggesting overall is that it requires some combination of both at the end of the day, and those are the options that we have in front of us, recognizing that I think a lot of people would like to have a more progressive way to fund local government. That just unfortunately doesn't exist right now. So, from the perspective of looking at different ways and different models, I think one of the pieces that I would share out is, we don't have to decide right at the moment what that next step is, but I think what you're hearing from the staff is, we would like direction to start working on the MPD. You don't have to choose the MPD at the end of the day, but we would like direction to start working on it because it does take a substantial amount of time. Now, if council wanted to direct us to also look at something else, then we could do that at the same time. But we are continuing to operate on the recommendation from the Sustainability Task Force that looked at all these pieces as well and recommended looking at the MPD as a model. I think one of the other pieces that I would remind all, as we've been discussing these things, is probability of success in terms of finding a path forward for us. Originally, we started looking at a 10-year fiscal sustainability. If you all recall, the task force came forward and said that the MPD, based on the numbers that they were provided, which were valid as of last year, that I think we were looking at a 14, right around 14 cents per thousand. If you go back to the report from last year, that was the MPD amount that was proposed that would bridge the gap along with utility tax. So, to Rachel's point, the difference between 14 cents per thousand and 75 is, it's substantial. So, that does provide opportunity to continue to keep up with costs if council chose to go that direction and the voters agreed. I think the other piece about this is, we just need to be clear that going to the ballot is, it comes with substantial, not risk, but it lowers probability of success because anytime you go to the ballot, there are a lot of different factors that play into how people choose to vote in, on any form or another. I think we are going to see that here in the next couple of weeks with some of the things that are on the ballot in our broader community. So, the only reason I bring that up is that I think we are looking for clear direction to start working, at least start working on the MPD as well. If you'd like to look at other pieces, we can look at those as well. One of the pieces I want to be clear about about a levy lid lift is, once you put it in place, if then when you go back out to try to renew it and it fails, you have immediate decisions to make. And when I say immediate, you have about a month and a half.
Yeah, I think we're looking at that as a potential bridge option while...
So, I just want to be clear about that piece, that once you start putting things in that bucket, then that's what you have to fund those things with, that bucket of money. And then if that bucket goes away, then you have to be able to make decisions about what it looks like when that happens. So, I think that's just one of the considerations that we have to, when we are looking at revenue options, about what happens if. And again, this is why the task force and you're hearing from the team and myself, that the MPD is where we are recommending because, once it's in place, it's in place.
Okay. The interwebs, for anyone who's curious, does say that a tax that's based on assessed property value tends to be more progressive than a utility tax, which is viewed as more of a flat tax. And so, even though certainly people can turn off their heater, turn off the lights to try to reduce their utility tax, it does tend to be far more regressive. So, that's where I'm trying to look at this. It's not to be difficult, but it's just trying to look at, you know, that is one of our stated goals as a council is to find more progressive or conversely, less regressive ways of approaching this. So, that's why I want to understand, you know, what an MPD would look like, how much could we pull out of the main budget and cover in an MPD versus going straight to the maximum 6% utility tax, which is going to hit people in a lot of places, right? I mean, everybody uses water, everybody uses electricity, everybody has heat, and you can't really survive today without phones. So, I feel like that's going to hit people, and again, out of our control, but it does coincide with a huge increase in utility costs coming from PSE. So, that just, it just feels like that's going to hit people really hard, and I think that's going to hit, on average, about $500 a household in their utilities. And that's not including the other 20% increase that's going to come to their utilities. And that's going to, that just feels a little bit harder than, as renters, right? Property taxes often get passed on to them, but maybe not completely and maybe not right away, whereas a utility tax is going to hit people immediately. So, that, those are the decisions that I'm trying to weigh. So, I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just worried. And especially as we start to look at trying to increase affordable housing, right? That's going to be another area where those utility taxes are going to hit folks, so thanks.
Councilmember Lamb?
So, I understand that, you know, yes, we definitely have to close this structural gap. I just, I don't have enough information, and I know that, you know, it's going to take time to provide us that information. I don't know, like, can we start off at, say, 3% utility tax? Or is that, or can we start? I don't even know. Do we start at 6%? Because it sounds like that's what we're going to need. And then lower it once the MPD kind of ramps up or you figure out more? I'm just trying to figure out like a timeline in my head, how this could work out, and find the sweet spot in like not having the maximum utility tax of other things could help it.
I'm going to jump in here real quick because I want to go back to the task force a little bit. Part of the reason, remember, the task force had the three-legged stool, right? It started with the reductions that we did. So, when we did that last, this current biennium, and then we did that moving forward with just such a tiny increase in budget over budget, right? But the reason that the utility tax allows for that bridge is because it's council-matic, because we can't count on anything voter-approved, right? So, to your point, Councilmember Lamb, yes, you could absolutely do that. You could implement the 6% in 2026 and then wildly successful with the voters, right? Then you could reduce that. But that key to Vicky's point about this being a bridge budget really is being able to use the tools that are easily available to get us to that point of fiscal sustainability. So, that would be an option for any council moving forward.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Gupta?
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to provide clear direction. I do support looking into an MPD. I'm not saying we shouldn't look into that, yeah.
So you need head nods for both?
It would be helpful.
Yeah, so utility tax and MPD.
Thank you.
So Councilmember Stewart, do you have something additional to add?
I have another question.
Okay, go ahead.
So one of the other things we haven't looked at is what would the budget look like if we could pull out some of our capital expenditures and have our reserve fund for longer and use, use some of our taxes to pay for those capital expenditures? Because this doesn't even begin to address the fact that we don't, once, once we stop having a reserve, we have no way of paying for our capital improvements, right?
So I would say we can definitely look to see what it would look like to take out the capital transfers, but that doesn't address the, the problem that's in front of us, which is that ongoing revenues are not keeping pace with ongoing expenditures. That, that's really the problem we're trying to address here. And that's what the utility tax and the MPD starts to, to, to address. If we adjust the capital transfers, it doesn't touch that at all. All it, all it adjusts is the existing fund balance. We still have to solve the, the problem that's in front of us.
Totally understand that. And I think that we run out of money for capital projects pretty quickly as well, right? So I guess
Yes.
My, my asking the question is that before we make decisions on these things, I would like to have that complete picture so that we know, like, we don't just implement a 6% increase, we implement the MPD and then we still don't have a mechanism to issue a bond to be able to do any of our capital improvements? And how are we going to go about doing that? Because it feels like there's a lot of, of moving parts there. Whereas that's why I, I'm interested in looking at a public safety levy, which I realize could be a little bit more challenging, but it may actually offer us the relief where we could then use some of our existing property tax for those bonds and not have to add another thing and another thing. So that's, that's why I'd like to really look at a more complete picture before we make final decisions. So it's not that, it's not that I don't want to look into these things, it's that I feel like we need more information on the whole thing. Because I, I don't know totally what's included in these projections, but I'm assuming that when we get to 2030, we have no more money for capital, for any major capital projects. Is that fair, except for stormwater, which has separate fees?
Correct. If, if we do nothing, we, we are out of everything. There's no existing fund balances, no reserves.
But even if we do this, we're still out of money for capital funds in 2030, right? Other than stormwater?
Not, not for capital, not for stormwater.
Not for stormwater, I get that. Stormwater's separate. I said everything but stormwater.
But we still have other, other sources of revenue that can only go to capital, right? So REIT is an example of that, impact fees are an example of that, so.
Well, that's why I want to understand, like, what does, what, what do we think would be covered for that? Like, I don't think we have any funding for capital improvements for sustainability, for example, right? So that's why I feel like, what does our, we have REIT for roads, but we know that that doesn't necessarily cover all of the roads, right? Though, all the transportation projects. So what are some of those other transportation projects that were, clearly, we don't have enough capital funding because we're pulling funding from the general fund to pay for our capital projects, I guess is what I'm getting at. So we've been doing that for years. So if we stop having excess in our general fund to pay for capital projects, there's going to be a, a need for that, right? So stormwater funds and REIT clearly don't cover all of our capital improvements, even today, right?
Yeah, totally agree, Councilmember Stewart. I think one of the pieces that, to your, to, heard from some of you tonight, most of you tonight, that we don't have enough information to make some of those decisions, totally agree. I think that's one of the reasons why, I think Vicky shared previously, we are bringing on a financial consultant. Part of that is to help us understand what we need to do to be able to think about bonds if we wanted to do that in the future. And part of that calculation would be, what would, what would we need to put in place in order to have revenue to be able to, to link to bonds? Because that revenue gap has to be above our, our year-over-year for, for 20 years. And so that's part of the work that we're going to be doing next year for sure and coming in and talking about these pieces, is trying to figure out right sizing, what that looks like. That's the important key here, and that's why we need all the lead-up time. Whatever it is that you all decide you want to do, we need that kind of lead-up time to be able to get all that in place and make sure we know what that looks like. So I agree, I think to Vicky's point, the bridge component of this is buying us a little bit of time to do that work, to determine where you want to go and then to go there. And then hopefully, we are successful. But yes, I think those are the outstanding questions that we do need to come back and answer. We don't have that answer right now for you, because if we did, we would be having a different conversation, because we, we would know, we would know for sure and we'd be able to say, yes, it's definitively this. I think even if you use the MPD as an example, like Rachel is sharing, there's so many different ways you can set an MPD up that, that it could be a little bit, it could be a lot. It just really depends on what, all the choices that you have in terms of ongoing expenses, maintenance, capital, just to use three big buckets, how much of each of those you choose to do, some, all, some, some of those three, one of the three, two of the three, however, that determines then what the rest, what remains in the, in the city's general fund that would be separate from the MPD. So those are all things that we have to look at and different inputs bring different outcomes. That's all future work. We're looking for, to be directed, if you will, to go forth and do that work so that we can be versant and come with answers for you all, because these are valid questions. I totally understand them and we, we were expecting these questions to come. And the answer is, we need to continue to move forward with all due haste to be able to answer them so that we can start to do the rest of the planning that goes with this.
Okay, because like, could REIT too be reallocated if we have an MPD to something other than parks, right? And then, again, looking at what that total does, because we're going to need to have additional funding for capital projects as well. And again, if we do, if we max out our, our utility tax and we do the MPD and we still don't have any wiggle room for the capital funds, then we haven't really solved the problem. So it's not that I'm unwilling to solve the problem, it's that I'm, I'm willing to feel like I'm sort of swinging a little bit in the dark until we really know what that total picture looks like so that we know when we take these actions that we've actually solved that problem. And so it's, it's just, it just feels like we're, we're giving you direction to say, yes, we want to look at these two things before we know what all the answers are. So I think I agree with Councilmember Gupta. I'd like to know more about a public, a public safety levy as well and what, what that would really look like, because that feels like it gives us more breathing room to be able to do all the things that we need to do. Whereas I'm worried that these two aren't necessarily going to solve our total problem and we're going to be right back trying to figure it out two, three years from now. So that's where I, I get concerned, thanks.
All right, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments. I don't know if you have any closing?
Appreciate the opportunity and the conversation. Thank you all.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then Scott, I'd love an idea or from David of how long we need to extend this for? Because this looks like a massive item.
You all brought your jammies, right? I believe David might, oh, there he is. We will ask David from here how long he thinks he needs for this item.
Cool. All right, I will entertain a motion to extend to 10:30?
I move we extend to 10:30.
Second.
All right, moving second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, thank you. David?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, David Pile, Department of Community Development. This evening, we are here for your final agenda item, which is the, an update on the city's comprehensive plan and development regulations. We've been hard at work, working through the implementing development regulations, responding to all of the bills that the legislature has pushed out. And we have a, what we believe to be a compliant package that also provides some enhancements in the area of affordability. With me this evening is Jeff Arango from Framework, who is our lead consultant on the city's comprehensive plan. He has a bit of a presentation and then we have opportunity for discussion with the council. And I also see that Tyler Quinn-Smith with Framework has joined us in the cloud, as well as our senior management analyst, Evan Fisher.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Just pulling up the presentation here and we'll be ready in just a moment. Okay, we are ready to go. Before we get into it, we do have one copy of the city's upcoming coffee table book, otherwise known as Comprehensive Plan. If you want to take a look at it, we can pass it around, don't want to distract you too much, but it's a beautiful document. I think you'll be proud of it. And I'll just put it there. This is in draft form, we're going to be presenting tomorrow with David and others at the APA conference and doing an exhibit. And so we'll be displaying all of our draft plans. But when we do get the final, we'll be printing a number of copies of it, so it's just a preview at this point. Okay.
It's the American Planning Association Washington Chapter Annual Conference. It's been kind of a, you know, since COVID, making a comeback. And this year's actually a three-day conference that's got a lot of, a lot of really great topics. One of them is comprehensive plans and we'll be presenting our comprehensive plan journey as one of the sessions.
Great. Okay, so the purpose of the presentation this evening is to give you an update on the timeline as we finish out the comp plan and development code updates to satisfy the required timeframe from the Growth Management Act. We'll go over some of the updates that we've made to the comprehensive plan draft itself since our last meeting. And then our primary topic is to give an update on the development regulations, which we've been working through and recently had a meeting with the Planning Commission as well to get feedback from them. So in terms of the timeline, you can see we're here in the first, I guess, the middle of October now. And we have a full draft of the code. At this point, we're making refinements to it. I think we feel good about where it's at and the level of effort that we've been able to put into it and incorporate all of the feedback that we've been getting. And of course, there is still some, time for some refinements. We've been focusing on coordinating the review at King County and PSRC and Department of Commerce, completing SEPA. That comment period closes here in the second half of the month. And I would say that we've been getting very positive feedback from those review agencies. There are, of course, as always, some refinements to make, but I think the feedback we've been getting has been very positive and feel like we're in a very good position to finish off this tremendous effort on behalf of the city. So we're still anticipating adopting in December and have between now and then to make refinements and incorporate your feedback. And then additional changes, the potential for additional changes have been docketed for next year as well, for any follow-up. So I would say that the updates we've made since the August 9th meeting are generally fairly minor. We've been getting feedback, of course, from the council and you can see that on the left-hand side of the slide and the updates that we've made in response to your comments. The Affordable Housing Committee with King County and the Puget Sound Regional Council also given us some feedback and I'd say some fairly minor refinements. King County and other outside agencies have given us a few comments, which are noted there in the red box, and then the docket request from Eastlake Development, which was reviewed previously by the council. So these are all relatively minor. We're working on also summarizing the city's revenues for capital projects, which is a requirement under GMA and making some minor refinements to the project list under capital facilities. But otherwise, these are the changes that have been made and I think, again, relatively minor at this point. One item that came up previously, we just wanted to get some confirmation from you, was regarding a dark sky policy. So we have renamed the land use element to include the environmental component, and that was based on feedback. And then our proposal for the dark sky policy is to add land use policy six point, and we'll add the number to that. Align outdoor lighting standards with dark sky best practices. The purpose here would just be to sort of go beyond just the technical requirements, but also sort of integrate opportunities for good outdoor lighting design to work with the dark sky practices. So be happy to take any comments on that, or we could continue on to the second piece on development regs and come back to this. Keep going, okay. So development regs, we will go through this briefly. Some of this we presented previously, but we just want to make sure that it's hitting home. So this is our approach to middle housing and accessory dwelling unit compliance. And I think the system we've come up here, I think Arch called it an elegant solution, which we liked. And really, the, the purpose here is to bridge the gap between the requirements of HB 1110 and making sure that middle housing works on a variety of different sites. And the basics of the middle housing bill are units per lot, but a lot could be 5,000 square feet, it could be an acre. And so what we've come up with a system that actually scales the lot size. On any lot, you can get three units, but if you have a larger lot, there's a calculator that we've made that we can make available to the city and to applicants. They simply put in their lot size and it'll tell you what the corresponding density is. If it's a smaller lot, it's going to be the three or four units. And if it's a larger lot, it's going to be based on the units per acre. We've taken the Florida area ratio system we put in place for development regs phase two and added more accommodations for additional units. It's a relatively modest 0.15. So when you're starting to add multiple units, it's likely that folks would use the 0.5 FAR that comes with the single-family unit and apply that to multiple units on the site. So you'd get generally smaller units, the more that you would add to the site. ADUs would be exempt and the FAR that applies to the single unit, the single-family home would remain as it is today. Our regulatory approach is, is to focus on the configuration of housing as opposed to distinct housing types. For example, if you say a duplex, that could be a stack duplex, that could be a side-by-side attached duplex. You could also do two units that are detached, so it's very flexible. And I think it kind of focused on the important aspects of the development, how parking is located on the lot, how the buildings relate to the streetscape, landscaping requirements, building height, and then some of the standards that address building form. So we feel like this is a good approach and one that'll provide flexibility for the city going forward. In the green box, you'll see some language that we drafted to provide some flexibility on parking. Again, applicants would have to meet the requirements based on a parking study to get relief. In some cases, that might be relatively straightforward, in other cases, it may not be approved if they don't meet the criteria. Dynamic setbacks were a big topic in development regs phase one to address some of the issues related to larger homes being in very close proximity to street frontages. We're not proposing to change the dynamic setbacks. We are just proposing to change the word homes to buildings so that it'll apply to any building on a lot and not just a home, which I assume was sort of more geared towards a single-family home. So those will remain the same for any new development. Another thing to highlight is our approach in the R1 district, and this kind of gets back to what we described, I described earlier. If you go with the basics of the bill, you would allow three units on a one-acre parcel, which is really not very feasible or likely to happen for middle housing. So the direction that we got from the council early on was to, you know, kind of optimize it and make it feasible, but also make it really fit in in some amish. And so we introduced this idea of the cottage code. Yes, you can do your three units like on any other district, but for those that want to opt in to doing cottage housing, it comes with additional requirements. You can get additional units, but there's limits on the square footage sizes, there's site planning standards. And as you can see from the diagram in the middle, it provides a lot more flexibility than individual lot development for things like tree preservation, shared parking, shared oak. lot development for things like tree preservation, shared parking, shared open space, which is really a hallmark of cottage housing. So we're really excited by this. And I think members of the community are excited as well. Another new requirement is to allow what's called unit lot subdivisions. So it's another way to increase homeownership. So the development standards, things like density setbacks, all of those things apply to the parent lot, which is the larger lot outlined in the dotted black and red. And then unit lots are smaller. They can be as small as the footprint of the building or a little bit larger. Those allow for individual ownership without the requirement for a condominium. And then the area in hatched is common open space that is managed through an association or similar entity. And I think that's it on that one. Coliving is another legislative mandate. It's not required to be adopted until the end, I think, of next year. But some mammoth is ahead of the curve, which is great. We'll allow for some potential refinement if needed, you know, next year as part of those updates. But coliving has to be allowed on lots that allow six-plus units. So per the middle housing density requirements that I just went through, that would not be all lots. It would only be lots of a certain scale. And it would depend by, by zone or by overlay. The density and parking requirements, one coliving unit equals .25 dwelling units. And that's due to the fact that coliving has some shared facilities. No change to any development, other development standards. So everything else would apply. We're going to add some definitions. And you can see an example image there of a project that's actually being designed and implemented by one of our office mates. And it's basically a coliving development, but as you can see, very nicely designed and detailed and provides nice shared common amenities and affordability. Parking flexibility, another state mandate. It has some limits on the amount of parking that can be required. That is also in the middle housing bill and the ADU bill as well. But in this bill specifically, required parking spaces cannot be required to be provided in an enclosed parking area like a garage or a carport. Tandem parking, where one car is parked in front of another, you have to allow that for middle housing. And then there's some flexibility if you have an existing gravel or grass pavers or whatnot. You can count that towards your parking requirement. And then finally, the size of parking spaces is limited to eight by 20 feet. Affordability requirements. So this is basically leveraging the middle housing bill to implement affordable housing requirements. I think we may have referenced, as we certainly did with the Planning Commission, not sure if we did with the council, but Redmond has a similar approach program in place. They are refining it and including the middle housing projects in their affordable housing program. I also saw recently, I didn't get to delve into the details, but there was an article in The Urbanist that came up on my feed that Mercer Island is also implementing affordability requirements. So there's starting to be a few more communities that are looking to do it. This is authorized in state law that allows communities to do it. And, you know, I think the, the key here is really to have a threshold that is achievable and will stand the test of time. If the requirement becomes too high, it could prevent the production of both market and affordable units, even though there probably are market conditions at certain ports of time where we probably could go higher. The advice that we've gotten from our economists that we're working with on Town Center and from our own kind of research and expertise in this is that, you know, setting the levels moderately is, is produces the best outcome. And I think also being realistic that those deeper affordability levels that we want to see in the community are going to be developed in other ways. And we have a number of other strategies that we're implementing that we did not have before we embarked on this comp plan update. So one of the things that we have been discussing with the Planning Commission is whether there would be any exemptions. And at this point, the exemptions that are written into the draft include existing homes, which is kind of an obvious one, but we wanted to make sure that was clear. Smaller units, you know, if you look at the existing R zones, you know, the problem that kind of goes back to development regs Phase One and then development regs Phase Two was the large size of units. So, you know, when you start to build in a more urban area like Town Center, there's already sort of built-in economics and you tend to get more smaller units. In the R zones, it tends to be the opposite. So exempting small units that are naturally a little bit more affordable makes sense to me and I think is something that should be considered. Carve-out units, so those are units that are within an existing structure and is not expanding the footprint or volume of the building. Garage conversions and then the bonus units that are generated from affordability or transit proximity. So some of the additional affordability measures that are in the basics of the middle housing overlays. So interested in the council's feedback on that, but that's where we are currently. We've been working closely with Arch as well. They've been a good partner. And I think that's everything we wanted to cover on that.
Can I add one thing to the affordability component? So the, the commission did debate this fairly intensely. And they were not all in alignment at first on this. And they were not aligned, in all in alignment in the end. It was not a unanimous vote to recommend that this be something the city take forward. I think there was a lot of concern about whether this would actually impact people trying to build a house on their own versus resulting in more affordable housing being brought forward to market. And the concern was, I think, around, say you were an individual and you'd bought a lot in the city and you wanted to build a house here for your family, if there was some form of a fee in lieu for the, the fractional units you were required, required to provide for your new single-family home that you're building, could be in the $60,000, that $60,000 range. And if you were having to choose between making the project, finishing the project, buying cabinets, finishing out the house, or paying that fee, that's something that could break you. So they were very conscious of that. And, you know, if you have a chance to watch that, that meeting, it's, it's a good conversation. And it highlighted a lot of different perspectives in the community about this type of program. Ultimately, they did provide, did majority vote, recommend to further it. They did understand that the benefit that this brings to the city from the broader perspective of a housing program.
Thanks, David.
Councilmember Gupta?
Sorry, is this an okay to time to ask questions or?
Sure.
In the Planning Commission meeting, I think there was also a question of whether the inclusionary zoning requirement would just result in a pass-through cost, you know, if that would increase the price of housing. And I wondered to know if you had any thoughts about that. Is that something we've seen in Redmond where the cost of the house just goes up?
Yeah. Well, I'll say a couple of things. You know, I think first, I would say, and this is something the Planning Commission talked about, was, you know, when are you sort of gaining value from the upzone, right? And I think part of the discussion was, well, when they go and build a second or third unit, they're actualizing the value. However, just a changing zoning theoretically adds value to a property, right? If you have a vacant piece of property and it's in downtown Seattle, you know, if you think back to those extruded maps that we showed with land value per acre, that that's based on the zoning that's set, right? So for someone who even owned a lot and didn't build on it and then sold it, you know, after the zoning change was made, there's an argument that that property is now more valuable, right? So even if they didn't build on anything. However, to your point, yes, certainly that additional fee adds to the cost of, of that unit being produced. Whether that is something that then results in a higher cost to the person that's purchasing it, that's difficult to say. There's a myriad of fees that people pay and, and costs fluctuate all the time from construction costs to, you know, financing costs, so on and so forth. So it's difficult to say what it would have on the, the actual price. However, the purpose of the fee is then going to produce an affordable unit that wouldn't otherwise be produced. And so in that sense, that's really where the benefit is.
I'm a little more of a pessimist about this, that I, I find it hard to believe that builders are going to sell building or sell property, sell development for less than what the market will bear. So if we didn't require something, or say we were able to, through process improvements and fee reductions, reduce permit fees, is the builder going to turn around and sell something for less than what the market will provide? So that to me is where I go back to. It also depends on the structure of the deal, because I've seen scenarios where at escrow and closing costs, things are piled on. So it really depends on how the deal is structured and when the fee comes into play. If the fee is part of the overall price and it's written into the price and it's not something that's accounted for late in the game at, at escrow, well, then it's probably not being passed through because it's part of the real estate pricing. But if it's something that's added on at the end, then it could be argued as being a pass-through.
Exactly. And I would say also that the Arch model that they've done is predicated on part of the increased value going to fund affordable housing and part of it going back to the developer. So it's supposed to be net positive for both entities.
Deputy Mayor Howe?
Yeah, I, I was listening to the Planning Commission meeting and I, I thought that you had also talked about the idea that these fees from single-family homes would be collected at the time that the house was sold. Did that get anywhere or not?
It, it depends on, on how you all want to structure the program.
Okay.
So we, we could allow, and this is something we're talking legal about. So just so you know, one of the benefits of, of having Ogden Murphy Wallace, Wallace as our legal counsel is they have a pretty deep staff pool in their office. And one of the wonderful attorneys at Ogden Murphy Wallace is doing a complete read-through of our implementing development regulations. So we'll be having some edits in response to that. We're really appreciative of that. We want to talk to them a little bit about a concept that we have, which is deferred payment, which is when you would, you would, so say you were building a house and you plan to live in that house, there would be a, a requirement on title that at any point of future sale, at, at the point of future sale, that at, at escrow that the fee be paid. So that, say you lived in it for 10 years and sold it, well, then at that point, 10 years from now, you'd have to pay the fee. But if you didn't sell it, you wouldn't have to pay the fee. So that was one approach we were looking at.
Yeah, I, I would just caution that the, the system needs to be manageable, right?
I don't know how you manage that.
And his team and everyone else who's doing great things at the city has a lot of things already on their plate. And you can just imagine the way that people might game the system, right? Oh, if you're building it for yourself, but you're not a builder. Well, I'm a builder and I have a family and, you know, like I created an LLC or I, you know, like it, at the end of the day, I think, I'm not saying don't have any exemptions, but just be cautious of the, of this person should get it versus this. And focus a little bit more on what you're looking for, for policy outcomes, right? Do you want to encourage smaller units to be built? Maybe we give an exemption there. If you're going to build a ADU on your site, that's, that's great, you know?
That's worth something. That's a good trade.
Right. As opposed to, you know, kind of, yeah, who you are. Thank you. Even though I'm receptive to that notion, you know, at, at that point, I would probably just exempt all single-family homes or something if I was going to do that. Because at the end of the day, it's all families or people trying to find a place to live. And it's difficult for everyone. So it's, it's a little bit challenging from a management perspective and from a policy perspective to, to, to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lamb?
Yeah, we just have one more, or a couple more, sorry. Rezone process. So this is a quasi-judicial process that would be handled via the hearing examiner. So this is set up because the future land use map now has one category for the R zones that then can feed in multiple zoning districts. So in order to change some of the zones, now you don't have to go and amend the comp plan, which is more cumbersome. So the criteria that we've come up with, first, it's got to abut a parcel in a different zone, minimizing excavation, of course, retention of critical area buffers, water and sewer capacity and drainage. But other than that, you could go and apply. The hearing examiner would review it against the criteria. There'd be, of course, opportunities for public comment. But this could be, you know, a flexible tool where there's parcels that may be appropriate for a higher designation and be able to supply more housing to the community. The bonus parcels, which are density bonuses for affordable housing on properties owned by religious organizations or the public or, you know, some of the utility providers as well. So we're going with a form-based approach for this. And in cases where these properties abut lower density zones or even properties within the same zone, if they're designed for lower density, there's an upper-level setback, step-back requirement of 30 feet so that that portion of the building that's abutting the R-zone property is equal to the height in the underlying zone, which is 35 feet. In that buffer area, they'll be required to have type-two landscaping, which is defined in the code. So we think this is a, a really compelling strategy to get affordable housing in the community. And we see a lot of opportunities to be able to do that. And I think these regulations ensure that those impacts will be mitigated and that these will be compatible with their sites. And that is the conclusion of the presentation. Turn it back over to the mayor for questions and discussion.
Great, thank you. And we do have eight minutes, so I assume we are going to need to extend. Councilmember Lamb?
Yeah, thank you for adding the dark skies code to the comp plan. I appreciate that. I did want to go back and talk about the changes that were made. I was hoping to actually see the environmental stewardship section separate from the land use. I actually see it separate. I actually see it more in line actually with the Climate Action Plan. Like if we were to connect those two, I just don't see it as, I, I see it making land use more complicated. And I don't know how many council member here agrees with that. But I just, I would like to see it separated. And I know you guys put a lot of work into it. So I'm not, I'm not even clear why, like, it stayed together.
So it, so it is separated within the land use section, right? Just to be sure. It's a subcomponent, sub-element within land use. I guess from our perspective, the reason why it was created that way and then refined down to what it is now is because when we talk about environmental stewardship, it always comes back to land use in the comp plan. And that we felt fit best within the land used element, land used element. Now if there, if, you know, you make a motion and you have three friends that direct us to change it, we'll go through the motions of prying it apart and trying to find a way to create a carve-out, a new element, basically, that is not one of the elements that is required under GMA, et cetera. We, and we could make that happen. It'd be quite a bit of reshuffling the plan, just to be sure.
So I motion that we extract the environmental stewardship section and create its own section, its own element.
I'll second that. I think we heard feedback on that. All right, moved and seconded. Did you want to speak to that motion?
Uh, no.
Okay. All's in favor of splitting these out, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
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 Okay. That motion fails. Councilmember Stewart, did you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I submitted, I documented all my questions on the development regulations. And given the late hour, I think we can handle those in email if you're okay with that.
Sorry, where'd you say those were? Sorry?
I had questions on the development regulations. I sent those in before the meeting.
Oh, today. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you said you put it in a document.
No, I was just saying that, given the late hour, it might be best to just do those.
We, we received them and responded to staff that will respond by email. So.
Perfect.
Expect those this week.
That was the 533. That was the 5:33 email, right? This one?
5:33, if you say so.
Yeah, 5:33 PM. I just want to make sure I saw your questions.
I did not document the timestamp, but then.
Next time, yeah. Perfect.
As you go through the development regulations, one thing to keep in mind is, there's a couple of different things to look for. One is, is do we get the controls right, you know, in general, like the, not the settings, so to speak, but the actual control? Is that, is the control right? And then is the setting right? So think of it that way. If there's something that stands out as odd, we'd love to hear about it. Chances are, it's the result of a state mandate. There are some peculiar things that the state required with regard to, like, what's the shelter, the shelter one?
The 400, the 400 feet?
400 feet. There's things that are in the state law that we're left scratching our heads on also. So there are going to be occasions where just that's what the state required.
Okay, and I don't know if in the code, if that was referenced or made clear, but we might want to do that so that other people don't say like, well, that's dumb, why are you doing that?
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
I move we extend another 15 minutes to 10:45.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Yeah, there he is. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, same. Please, continue. Do we have any other questions on this portion?
If we could get direction on this.
Yeah, so you want to, okay. Would someone like to make a motion for the dark sky policy? Councilmember Lamb, go ahead.
I motion to add the dark sky policy for goal LEU 6 and land use and environment stewardship element.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Good there.
So over the next few weeks, as we move towards bringing this back again on November 5th, we, you know, any feedback you have, November 5th, right? Yeah. Any feedback you have, if you could send by email, we are closing down the CONVIO component of this and moving to more specific edits. And what we can do is, if you have something that you want to bring forward to the group, we could start to create a list of things you could go through at that meeting where we could walk through and make motions on proposed edits. And if those edits are supported by the majority, then we can proceed with making those edits prior to bringing it back for public hearing on December 3rd.
All right, council, anything for David, or Jeff, or Evan, or Tyler?
We're also happy to meet with you if you want. More than happy to. We, you know, we've been working on this for quite a bit of time and happy to explain things if there is the need for that. Just please reach out to us. We're available.
Great, thank you both. Thanks for staying late.
Sure, no problem.
David had a marathon.
Yeah, David, yeah. Whole meeting was yours. Scott?
Yeah, David, don't run away just yet. You'll need to know the answer to this. Counsel, I'm getting different, I need some clear direction for the November 5th meeting. Do we start early or do we pick a different evening?
What was, what was the vote?
Well, some have changed, apparently during the meeting tonight. So originally, it was five to start early and two for a different day, and that has since changed. I believe there are four potentially folks that would like to pick a different day. So at this point, I'm just looking for council to choose what they'd like to do, and then we can, David has some noticing he has to do, so this is kind of important about which day we actually hold the meeting on.
So I don't know who changed, if they would like to speak to that, because I can't do Wednesday. That's all I know.
Well, then, I'll make a motion that we move the November 5th meeting to November 4th. Yeah.
Second.
And I'll speak to the motion. November 5th, as everyone knows, is our National Election Day. Polls close on the East Coast at 5:00 PM West Coast time. We have on that agenda a lot of really important things, including opening our public hearing for our budget, and I don't think anybody's going to be paying attention. Actually, I take that back. Paul Stinkney said he would still pay attention to city council, but he's probably the only one. So I just don't think it's the right message to send to the public that we would do such important work and potentially take votes on things when we're pretty sure nobody's going to be paying attention. Thanks.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Fourth? Anything else, Scott?
No, that, in the interest of time, Mayor, thank you, that will be all for tonight.
And is that at 6:30?
Yeah, regular time, just Monday, November 4th, and we will kindly ask Carrie to find a substitute, because she is double-booked that evening.
Okay, then I change. We gotta, we can't lose Carrie. All right, council, do you have any reports? Councilmember Stewart, you're?
Yeah. I was going to go through all the things we voted on for EFER, but in the interest of time, I will simply suffice it to say that we did, in fact, pass the budget. I can send a written report with all of the individual policy changes that we made and what those final numbers were.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
I have a Board of Health meeting on Thursday and a Solid Waste Committee meeting on Friday. I will send out the agenda.
Cool. Councilmember Trine?
SCA Network Dinner tomorrow.
Sorry, the mic was off, but it was salmon.
Sorry. SCA Network Dinner and the salmon release on Thursday.
Awesome. That's a fun week.
Yeah.
All right, everybody, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Good night, everybody.